I think we're just waiting for Curtis. Who else are you waiting for Jake?
I think that's it.
There's Curtis.
Let me see, I think. I think we're all set, I'm sure that the, the one last person that, that will be showing up on the agenda will be jumping on presently. So I think if you want to go ahead, please do.
Okay, great. I'd like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It's Thursday, May 13th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM and we are meeting remotely via Zoom. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGLC 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. This meeting is being broadcast on Willie Net TV Channel 1302 in Williamstown and it will be posted to the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube page 24 hours after the meeting has concluded. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Next up on our agenda is public comment. We have three folks signed up, three people and groups signed up for comment. And first up, we have Andrew Skinner, who is from Williamstown and speaking to Agenda Item, Agenda Item 8 Marijuana Cultivation in Williamstown.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Yeah, so my name is Andrew Skinner from Cluett Drive in Williamstown. I'm a parent of four children, one at Mount Greylock, one who has graduated, and two on the way up from Wes, and I also went to Mount Greylock. I just wanted to give a quick update on the evolving landscape for marijuana cultivation. Excuse me, near the school, just a couple of weeks ago, the state opened up agricultural preservation restriction or APR lands to cannabis operations. APR lands adjacent to Mount Greylock include the fields wrapping tightly around the west and south of the softball, baseball, and JV soccer fields, as well as the hillside orchard and fields across Route 7. These lands are already on the market and the cannabis companies likely have the deepest pockets and greatest incentives of any bidders. So while the focus has been on the eligible properties to the north and west near the cross-country trails and the track and the school building itself, the school is now virtually surrounded by properties on which the proposed bylaw will, will allow subdividing and leasing and land sales to cannabis companies. To be clear, our current bylaw allows that as well. As you know, I already had many concerns about placing outdoor growings wide-ranging externalities into rural residential zones and especially around Mount Greylock. I also worry on top of externalities, what kind of cynical message would we send to our students with marijuana grows beside the school? These concerns are falling under an ongoing steamroller of victories for industry lobbyists, starting with the planning board veering to 100,000 square feet from last town meeting's simple majority vote for 5,000 on a farm. Then in November, the Cannabis Control Commission changed the school buffer zone rules from not allowing cannabis operations on immediately adjacent properties to now allowing them. And that has now been followed a couple of weeks ago by this decision to allow cannabis operations on APR lands. I don't think the planning board necessarily anticipated both of these seismic shifts when they ignored the majority of last town meetings voters and headed down their current path. But with the school now maximally exposed, I think the outdoor part of the bylaw is clearly and woefully inadequate. I should also point out that Mount Greylock is a regional school drawing from some neighborhood communities, neighboring communities such as Lanesboro whose voters chose to ban outdoor growing. I think we as a town need to be mindful of putting students from other towns in a cloud of cannabis odors for the benefit of a few lucky Williamstown landowners. Those students don't get a vote at our town meeting, nor did their parents, but this committee can speak for them here tonight. After two years of unresolved debate about outdoor growing, it's at least clear the learning curve is steep and there are too many issues with the outdoor proposal to safely repair it on the floor of town meeting. So instead, I think the outdoor part of the bylaw needs to be rejected. In the coming year, the planning board can, if they desire, make another stab at taking the outdoor issues and these recent events as they affect Mount Greylock more seriously. I would be happy to discuss this with you if you have any suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our public comment sign up, we have Dave Armet, Ralph Hammond, Alan Jesuit, Janine Layla, Donna Weed from Williamstown, speaking on Item 12B Professional Development Activities Pertaining to DEIB. I see Janine Layla on the call. Um, will you be reading the letter, Janine?
I hadn't planned to, but I guess I can go ahead and read it.
Thank you.
For the group. Oh, stop it, phone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, thank you first for the opportunity to comment, and I'm sorry that I'm looking kind of sideways at you. My camera is funny on my computer. So we speak for a group of citizens who strongly support a bias-free Mount Greylock Regional School District. We have some concerns and those concerns are shared by many other citizens not expressly named here on this letter. So how did we come to comment here tonight? A number of us noticed in I Berkshires April 14th, 2021, the district's proposed calendar and budget for next year. Included is an emphasis on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, the DEIB initiative. We have also become aware of some well-publicized outrage from concerned parents and teachers at elite New York private schools at the Loudoun County, Virginia Public Schools, and at many other districts across the country. So the charge is, are we indoctrinating or educating? Families, caregivers, teachers, students, and taxpayers are deeply concerned with the approach some schools have taken with regard to their diversity and equity initiatives. Thus, we were prompted to ask a number of specific questions of our district. As we awaited answers from the district, we came upon Mount Greylock High School's current mission statement. We wondered if members of our communities were familiar with the concepts of restorative-based processes and inclusive diversity. A very quick and admittedly very informal survey indicated that many were not. In addition, we learned that the Mount Greylock School Council's Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Planning Committee is facilitated by a member of the Williamstown Dire Committee. His public comments appear to us to align closely with the very philosophies that have sparked the controversies mentioned above. So please understand, we have no concern whatsoever regarding his inclusion on this planning committee. But facilitator. We have to date made two previous written inquiries about the underlying philosophies upon which Mount Greylock Initiative is to be based. Today, our written inquiries, including those about the underlying philosophies that inform the district initiative, have not all been answered to our satisfaction. And several of the terms used in those responses indicate that certain of the concepts that concern us have already been accepted and adopted. We believe that our inquiries and the Mount Greylock responses are all a matter of public record, so any interested member of the district community can see the details of our shared communications, and of course, we would be happy to share those with anyone. This last year or so, effective communication has been complicated, if not impossible, in part because of COVID constraints, in part because of the lack of print material addressing several critical civic issues for Northern Berkshire. Emails and Zoom meetings are no substitute for frank and free person-to-person communication. And many people do not or cannot or choose not to communicate via electronic platforms. Given this context, we question. We do not, given what we actually know about the plans in our district, challenge the initiative when we freely admit that we and apparently many others may have missed important efforts at community outreach. We believe that all of us are potential stakeholders in the education of our children. We need to be informed. We need to understand. We need to know how we can participate. So we are here to ask again what the district has done to date regarding the initiative. I believe that's on the agenda tonight. And what plans it has for the future of such efforts? Do you anticipate any significant curricular or programmatic changes related to Mount Greylock's initiative? We are particularly interested in the how of what is planned. We request a listing of and copies of probable training and classroom materials to be used. We request information regarding the diversity consultant's job description and specifics on the process by which the job description was developed and how the consultant's position was posted. What were the hiring criteria? Was the hiring by committee or by individual? How widely was the job advertised? What are the salary and benefits? What is the term of the position? How did the aforementioned planning committee come to life? Were community volunteers recruited? How was the committee facilitator selected? Importantly, the district's stakeholders are keenly interested in the entire projected cost to taxpayers thus far estimated at up to $95,000. But it is not clear that this cost includes district staff and faculty time for in-service training. What is the current cost estimate? Including not only training and classroom materials and presenters and the cost of the consultant position, but also the entire cost of faculty, staff, and administrative FTEs dedicated to the initiative. We ask in addition that you clarify how much student time will be redirected specifically to the initiative gleaned from other time on learning and where this time will come from, i.e. at the expense of which academic and/or co-curricular subjects. If you are in the process of discussing or even just now considering some of the questions we have asked, please just say so. We respectfully ask for this information as soon as possible. And ask parenthetically, might it be ready in a week's time? We wish to be reasonable. We hope that both the school committee and the Mount Greylock administration will support our good faith efforts to learn of the district's goals and processes. We encourage you to reach out, again, if you've already done so, to inform the Mount Greylock community about the DEIB initiative. Information, especially based on fact, diffuses controversy. As one of our group noted to a member of the high school administration recently, we are confident that our group agrees with the district on the goals. We stand with you and behind you as we all commit to a school community welcoming and free of bias. As the district progresses with its diversity and inclusion efforts, we trust that we can constructively discuss the process as well as the product. Reasonable people inevitably want and support what is best for their community's children. And the collective wisdom and common sense of reasonable, everyday people is most times breathtakingly shrewd and on point. Let's get this right together. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to address the committee, especially your indulgence for this particularly long letter.
Thank you. Next up, we have public comment from the DEIB Parent Caregiver Action Network from Williamstown. And they are also speaking on agenda topic 12B. Activity is pertaining to DEIB. I don't know who will be reading their comment. Is it Kim Nichol? Okay, great. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. My name is Kim Nichol. I am a parent of two children in the Mount Greylock School District, and I am reading this letter on behalf of a group of parents and caregivers from Williamstown, Lanesboro, and other towns that send children to the school district. Dear members of the school committee, the Mount Greylock Regional School District recently announced goals to build a more robust curriculum, including principles of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, DEIB. In light of recent social media controversies that were elicited by the announcement of the district's DEIB plans and initiatives for the coming year, we, the members of the DEIB Parent Caregiver Action Network, write to express our unwavering support of the Mount Greylock Regional School District's initiatives to ensure the security, celebrate the diversity, and promote the mental and social well-being of our children. Every child deserves to feel safe, both physically and emotionally at school. We appreciate the efforts that the school committee and the district are making to ensure equity is a cornerstone of the education of our children. We believe that having a DEIB strategy is a human right that we owe to our children. As the entire nation is being pushed towards a more equitable, inclusive society, we cannot regress or accept any push towards isolation and rejection of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Embracing ideals of a color-blind ideology and emphasizing equal opportunities ignores the reality that differences in access to power are real and undermines the more important work of engaging with and enhancing diversity. Such an approach is a transgression of the rights of our children and denies them the opportunity to understand the complexity of the world they inhabit and in which they will be called upon to serve. By offering our children education about the diversity, richness, and complexity of their social environment, we are preparing them for a better and more inclusive future. We cannot afford to have Mount Greylock Regional School District fall behind in bringing a focus on diversity to the curriculum. To do so would be a failure to live up to the standards of a modern and equitable education. It is not surprising that some members of our community might be against diversity-focused initiatives in our schools. Through unsubstantiated accusations of indoctrination and misusing public funds, we have seen how detractors of these initiatives have sought to undermine the fundamental work of equity and civic engagement that is at the core of DEIB. The attack on proposals and projects that steer our community toward an inclusive direction that appreciates difference and builds on it as a strength rather, rather than as a source of weakness speaks of xenophobia and notions of white supremacy which have no place in our community. We believe that a school system that pays attention to the differential power dynamics inherent to racial, social, linguistic, economic, gender, and cultural difference is the only one worthy of our children's time and attention in school. Education beyond providing children with the skills to read, write, and count is foundational to the kind of society we want for our children. A society where they learn about and emulate values that seek to uplift instead of tearing down and stigmatizing others. We support a school system that protects the fundamental rights of our children to celebrate their identities and their peers through the intentional centering and appreciation of differences as they come to a better understanding of their world. Thank you very much for your attention. Signed, Members of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Belonging Parent Caregiver Action Network. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our public comment agenda item. Next up on our agenda is the student spotlight.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. So tonight, I would like to recognize three of our students. Recently, these three students graduated from the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition Youth Leadership Program, otherwise known as the YLP. I believe two of the students are on, but the, the three students are 11th graders. Jonah Hayne, Katherine McAllister, and Alexis Toomey. So the YLP is a place that students explore how they can make positive changes both in their own local community and globally. So this program brings together students from across the county. And they learn leadership skills and conflict resolution skills. They practice goal setting and assertiveness. So the program runs from October to June. They meet twice a week for a couple of hours. So I am excited to add to the list of Mount Greylock alumni graduates of the YLP, Jonah, Katherine, and Alexis. And I believe Jonah and Katherine are gonna come online and share share a couple of brief thoughts about their experience at the YLP. So Jonah, would you like to kick it off?
Thank you for the invitation, first of all, to be able to speak tonight about the Youth Leadership Program. I'm very happy to have the chance to have to share my experience with the program overall. While there are a lot of things that I took away from my time with the YLP, I think the main thing that I learned was the power of diversity in every sense of the word. When you have a dozen different people from different walks of life with different stories behind them, and you have us all together discussing and working towards a common goal, and you start to see something incredible appear. All those different strengths and ideas, they add up and unify, and it winds up with an end result having a powerful impact.
Great, beautiful. Thank you, Jonah. Katherine, I can't see if you are on, but if you are, would you like to make a, make a statement about your experience?
Our wifi is a little bit spotty, so I'm sorry if that affects anything. But I also very much appreciate being invited to talk to you all on the call today. I think the biggest thing that I was able to take away from the program was the ability to be able to speak with a lot of other kids in our district that we don't normally get to see. Especially with COVID, we're all pretty separate in our schools and we got to work in a collaborative effort on topics that are really important. So we got to work on topics such as bettering the environment and working on a common goal throughout the entire year that not only supports a national and global effort, but also a community-based effort.
Very good. Thank you, Katherine. So again, the, the three graduates were Jonah Hayne, Katherine McAllister, who we just heard from, and not present tonight, Alexis Toomey. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. I'm sure you can see all of the air clapping happening, happening right now. Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have April 8th, April 27th, joint meeting with select board, and April 27th, special session. Do I have a motion to approve the April 8th, 2021 meeting minutes?
Miller, I so moved.
Miller moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kurt, Elfinbine, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote alphabetically by last name, please.
Owen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfinbine, I.
Green, I. Miller. Oh, am I next? Sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't know who was coming next. Malloy, I.
I thought I was still just last. Miller, I.
She slid right in there to the second to last slot there. Thank you. That motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve the April 27th, 2021 joint meeting with select board minutes?
Make it easy. We'll move again.
Okay, Miller moves.
Bowen.
Bowen, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Bowen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfinbine, I.
Green, I. Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve the April 27th, 2021 special session minutes?
Miller, so move.
Miller moves. Do I have a second?
Bowen, seconds.
Bowen, seconds. Um, the only thing I wanted to note on this was if, I think there were some documents related to the special session in the notes, if we could just include, include them, the attachments that we had for that meeting, that would be really helpful in the future.
Carrie, I have some comments. Yeah. So mine are, I don't know if they're mostly clerical. I could actually just send them to Steve. But under number three on page one, where it says have documents in packet, I think that actually refers to the, when we talked about it in the finance committee. So I would take out have documents in the packet. Oh, actually, now that you, okay. Now that I'm thinking about it in relation to your comment, it actually does refer to the fact that we had them in the school committee, didn't we?
I think we did, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so sorry about that. I think still to, to clarify that we walked through the documents in the finance committee earlier that day. So that's page one. It's under number, Roman numeral number three, second paragraph. You could say school committee has documents in the packet. Finance committee walked through the documents.
Okay.
All right. Then on page two. And oh goodness, how do I identify this? It's right in the middle of the page. It starts other modifications. There's a paragraph. Okay. It's just, it's a little unclear. Relatively small money on making sure that a water line that is not potable slash for irrigation that had existed semicolon leads to the 30,000 plus water cost. I'm just not sure what, what it is that we're reporting there. I know that this was a conversation that we were reconnecting a line. So maybe that's, maybe we just need to.
And that the total cost of the reconnecting wasn't that high.
Right. Okay. And I know the 30,000 plus water cost came in just that day.
Right.
So maybe, you know, just if, if I were reading this, not having been there, I wouldn't really understand what was being talked about here. But there are two important points. One is that it was an existing line that we're reconnecting and that it wasn't much, well, and that it wasn't much money, but that there's also this new cost, $30,000 to bring in water. Was that? Yeah, it was $30,000 to bring in water just for that. For this, for the sod. Yeah. So that was a, that was a surprise.
Well, I've added. So I've added the following note, added 513. This is for an existing line that we are connecting and that it wasn't that much money, but there was also a new cost of $30,000 to bring in water, which was just noticed.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
All right. And then I think my last comment was on page three. No, sorry, I have a few more. So page three. Middle of the page again, Jose question on watering truck. Never involve Perkins Eastman and their team, never directed them to include a new set of irrigation wells as the set of their work. I think we talked about the fact that actually, I'm not sure why I highlighted that. Sorry.
No problem.
I'm gonna go further on page four. Three paragraphs up, Carrie, rather than making a motion, should give the administration the authority. So I think here I asked for clarification from Joe on why he had suggested that we not move the documents in front of us. So I guess that's what you're saying here, rather than making a motion should give the administration. Rather than moving the documents, that's what it is. Rather than moving the documents before the committee comma, we should give the administration the authority to put the bid out. Okay, so here I'm asking the question. Okay, so I'm asking Joe, why, why did you suggest, Joe Bergeron, why did you suggest at the beginning that we not move the documents and rather give the administration the authority to put the 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 bid out? So if you could just clarify that it's that whole thing is is a question to Joe.
Well, here's what I wrote.
He then answers.
Note added 513, asking Joe, why did he suggest we not move the documents and instead give the administration the authority to put the bid out?
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. I think it's better to put these as notes afterwards because that way it's it's clear what this is coming from.
Okay. And then I guess my last comment is about the placement of the vote. So I think it's it happens later. So you have the vote passing unanimously, but then there Jose is asking a question and I'm saying point of order, we should vote on the motion first. But according to the minutes, we've already voted on the motion. So I think the vote is just appearing earlier in the minutes than we actually voted.
Okay.
So I think the vote comes last.
Okay, so let me move that down then.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, so Julia and Steve, are you okay with those changes? Okay, and any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Bowen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I. Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Uh, next up on our agenda, principal updates. And I do not know who's going first.
You wanna pick?
You want me to spin the spin the wheel? Since you spoke first, Nolan.
I'll go first. It's always alphabetical. So a quick update now, let's say here, so it should be rather quick. On April 28th, we had the Vermont Family Network join us virtually for a couple of different assemblies. The first was a puppet show for grades K through three on stress and anxiety. And students in grades four through six participated in a workshop about stress and anxiety. The cool thing on the administrative end is they had the students participate in a chat about what stressed them out, what's bothering them, which me and Mrs. Vow got to see, which would be us, you know, gave us some good insight on what our students need from us. Um, especially around academics. Uh, another news, MCAS starts next week. Grades three and four will be participating in the MCAS next week. Grades five and six will be the week after that. The Remote Academy will be taking the MCAS on the week of May 25th. Grades three and four will be on Tuesday and Wednesday. Grades five and six will be on Thursday and Friday with the science exam happening the week after that. Kindergarten orientation is on May 25th with kindergarten screening on June 7th and 8th. A lot of kindergarten families have been reaching out to us. I think we have nineteen or twenty already geared up to come in. And then the big information, graduation. These sixth graders have had a absolutely screwy year. We're doing everything we can to make it special for them. They didn't get the Cape Cod trip, which I know is like the pinnacle of elementary school, especially in Western Massachusetts. So we are looking to make the last three days special. On June 14th, we are having a SEAL Day, and that is a social and emotional artistic learning day, which will be led by Mrs. Miss Kick and our school psychologist. They will have a bunch of artistic, socially emotional activities to I think the focus is on decision-making and making good decisions in tough times. Uh, June 15th is still a little bit top secret. It is gonna be a organized day by Mr. Bradley and Ms. Mello with a bunch of different teamwork activities. The one piece of insight I can give you is we will have a socially distanced cookout, and that's a safe socially distanced cookout. I'm hoping we have some hamburgers and hot dogs and maybe some potato salad, because that stuff means summer is here. And lastly, on June 16th, at 10:00 a.m., we will have a graduation for our sixth grade class outside. I'm thinking on the basketball court. We are still working on a safety plan and logistics. So what questions do you have for me?
Is this how I do this? Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, I have two questions. I would like to come to the barbecue because that sounds really fun. And also oh, next year, I'll be there next year then. Well, if parents are allowed. Anyway, um, how do the Remote Academy students take the MCAS? I'm just curious. Is that done at home remotely, or do they come into the school for that?
So this, I could talk for hours on this.
I don't mean.
So the way that it is being done is they will have their Zoom open and a browser with the test nav URL typed in, and they will have their username and password emailed to them via their Google Classroom the day of. They open up their Zoom, they have to have their screen on, and the test nav open at the same time. And they take the assessment.
They take it at home.
Yeah, so special accommodations like human read aloud and human scribe. They actually, the Proctor has the same username and password. They actually log into the Zoom of the student and type in the answers or read the assessment to them in a one-to-one Zoom.
Well, sounds like you guys have everything figured out. That's awesome.
Sure. I don't know who gets to call on you. Is it Christina?
You could do it, Nolan.
Thanks, Nolan. And thank you, Christina. And welcome, Ursula. So we haven't had a chance to say that. Nolan, just a question, because you brought up the Remote Academy, and this is only because I'm curious about the state of our Remote Academy, especially after we've transitioned to fully in-person learning, at least you have transitioned from hybrid to fully in-person. How many students are currently enrolled in the Remote Academy? And then are we, what's the support or how is the support change or has the support changed in terms of teaching staff dedicated to the Remote Academy?
So I just talked to Joe about these numbers yesterday. I believe it's fourteen and twenty-eight, fourteen Lansborough students and twenty-eight Williamstown students. The support hasn't. So in terms of the personnel change, the same number of teachers, same number of paraprofessionals. The way the support now is it works now is it is it is more targeted. So we created Google Calendars for teachers to sign up for academic support for their students. And in that sign up, they say this is what the student needs to work on. This is a work, like this is a page in the book. And this is, you know, he's struggling or she is struggling with X, Y, or Z. So they can, they have slots to fill in the afternoon morning, as well as there's special education time and specialist.
And then the the MCAS results that we will get. I'm assuming we'll be looking very carefully at how how our how our students who are in the Remote Academy have fared relative to their to their cohorts who who are in the in-person hybrid.
I think yes, but I think we're gonna be looking for learning loss all over the board, just to make sure we cover everything that we missed this entire year.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Nolan?
Sorry, I do have one more. I I'm gonna preface this with I'm getting my information from Facebook, so I don't know if it's true, but I thought I read the I thought I read that um, the Remote Academy was not going to be offered next year starting in the fall. Is that true? Everybody will be back?
Jake, you want to take this one?
I would love to take that.
Sorry, if this isn't the right, I I just, you know.
No, I I think it's a fine time. We we are you know, public, public school, most public schools are not tooled to offer in-person instruction as well as fully online instruction, particularly to elementary students. Our intention at this point administratively is not to offer the Remote Academy in the fall. I've spoken with a few parents about options that are out there for students that really thrive via remote instruction, particularly at the elementary level. The the state is the, and and when I say the state, I mean, the Department of Elementary and Secondary has thus far said we're not requiring districts to do it as of right now. That could change tomorrow. That could change a month from now. That could change three months from now. As it stands at this moment in time, we we would, we would envision ourselves putting our resources back into serving every child in person in our buildings.
Understood.
Thank you. Okay.
I think Steve might have a question, even though he's on mute.
Yep. Do we have many sixth graders in the Remote Academy?
We have six.
Okay. And are we including them in the graduation plans at Less and Rest, or are we doing something different for them?
Cindy and I have not talked about that yet. It's on our to-do list to see the safest way to make sure those families feel included.
Okay. And then I know this is a very different year. I know in previous years, there's been school committee members at graduations. Are you looking for any school committee participation either remotely or in person?
Um, anyone that wants to give a speech? No.
No, no.
Um, if you, I mean, there will be at least one, two school committee members there already because they're parents, I believe.
Okay.
Don't want to miss anyone, but if you want to, I will, I will find space for you, Steve. If you want to attend, you will not be obligated to do anything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who wants to go next for principal updates?
All right, I'm jumping in.
Go for it.
Hi, everybody. Um, it's been an incredibly busy last several weeks at Williamstown Elementary School, as I imagine it is everywhere. Um, I want to point out first that last week we had our staff appreciation week. It was definitely a time to recognize everybody in our building. I have to be honest, what we've accomplished since April 5th and really since the beginning of the year is nothing short of remarkable. And the only way any of it happens was under incredible teamwork by everyone involved. So I would love to give a shout out to our cafeteria workers, our building and grounds crew, our substitute teachers, all of our paraprofessionals, our office staff, our teachers, everybody who has really come together. The idea that you have a job description anymore in an elementary school seems a little bit of a a joke in that everybody in every position has done no less than one million things that were outside of your purview before this pandemic. So I am incredibly grateful and incredibly lucky to be part of a staff and of an entire community at Williamstown that really has embraced trying to get us through this pandemic. And I want to make sure that I give all of them a thank you because they matter and it's made a tremendous difference in us being able to come back to school successfully in person. Um, next, our fourth graders have been very busy working with Shakespeare and Company. This week has been the week when they are recording As You Like It by Shakespeare. This has been nothing short of amazing. Shakespeare and Company is impressive in a normal year when we're in person, but walking into the auditorium this week and watching students on stage performing their lines while there's a computer off the stage while Shakespeare is zooming in to give directions and coaching, while the classroom teacher becomes the cinematographer to actually video the different scenes was amazing. I was really concerned of what it was going to look like and where the kids going to get what we wanted them to get out of it. And it again was nothing short of amazing. The kids were so excited to have memorized lines in Shakespeare. Shakespeare and Company was able to do lessons through Zoom weekly with the fourth graders, and they were still able to achieve that magic of trying to understand Shakespeare, but also getting the kids their first taste at trying to do a performance. And it was incredibly impressive. We're hoping as soon as we are able to get the clips put together and the actual full-length video from each of our, you know, our fourth grade classes together, we'll be sharing that out with our families and with the school committee because it's pretty amazing. The next thing I do want to talk about is our Renzi Award winners. So there's a committee consisting of administration, our fifth and sixth grade teachers, our specialists in art, music, library, PE and technology. They determine the sixth graders who best exemplify the qualities of a good citizen that we value at Williamstown Elementary School. That encompasses kindness, enthusiasm, and helping others. The award was originally established by a citizens committee to honor the career of a longtime Williamstown Elementary School teacher and administrator Helen Renzi. And it's something that we are happy to celebrate each year. This year's Renzi Award winners are Ward Bianchi, Noah Fredette, Reese Raymond, and Nora Stricker. So we're incredibly proud of our four students and our four recipients this year. Next, we are very proud to say we have survived six weeks of negative pooled testing results. That's been a really big deal at Williamstown Elementary School. I haven't had to write any emails or any letters around COVID results, so we're really proud of that. And we're incredibly grateful to everything our school nurse and Joe. They are working around the clock to make sure our results, you know, all of our tests get sent out. And it's, it's definitely a process that we're grateful for all of the work that our nurse and Joe have been doing. Our kindergarten registration is well underway. As I was told early on when I took over as principal to check the census, but don't rely on the census. And I have definitely learned that it has not been a good enroll, good indicator of enrollment. They do not match up at all. So far, my kindergarten numbers are are looking pretty good for next year. And we're planning our kindergarten orientation on June 9th. We'll be coordinating with our bus company and trying to do a somewhat traditional kindergarten orientation where students will come in. They'll take a bus ride around the community. They'll be able to see the playground. They'll be able to also see inside of a kindergarten classroom after meeting with our kindergarten teachers, you know, that idea of trying to bring back some of the normal and also trying to bring back some of those, you know, events that really make school what it's supposed to be and things that kids look forward to. And kindergarten orientation is really one of those milestones. So we really feel like we can do it and we can do it safely while still following all of the safety protocols to keep our students and our staff safe. And as Nolan said, MCAS testing begins next week. We're gonna keep our fingers crossed as it's Nolan and my first time through MCAS, so wish us luck on that. Our teachers are ready, as ready as they can be. We're really glad that there's only one session of English Language Arts and Math and that we don't have to do multiple sessions this year. But, you know, you can keep our students and our teachers in your thoughts for the next two weeks as we get through MCAS testing. We would greatly appreciate it. And then lastly is our sixth grade graduation. We have a similar plan to what Nolan laid out. Our graduation will be June 17th at 1:00 p.m. Our graduation will be June 17th at 1:00 PM. Our plan is to have the entire event outdoors in our tent out back. We're going to be giving our families updates on information as far as number of guests as we work out the logistical pieces. And then leading up to our graduation, we'll have some of the traditional events where our sixth graders do a walk-through through school. We play music. They're supposed to really take a look and walk through the halls of Williamstown Elementary one more time. And then we have a super secret event that I don't want to give any details about yet because even our sixth grade teachers don't know yet. But it's something we felt like was a good celebration for our sixth graders to try and have them finish up their time at Williamstown Elementary School with something special that's unique for them to celebrate their accomplishments and help them get ready for middle school. So a lot of things going on, but you know, we're really proud of what we've accomplished this year for sure.
Any questions? Jose?
Thanks, Cindy. And I'll reiterate, reiterate your your gratitude that you you express for for your staff and and I'll think I can speak for for the school committee in thanking you and Nolan and Jake and 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 the entire administrative staff at Mount Greylock for for this incredible year that we we have been through. Honestly, thank you so much. The question I've got is just a simple one, and it's just, it's, I think it's it's more for clarification and maybe to check in on on the status of, well, they hear you, hear you describe how well-staffed you think we are at Wes. Earlier in the academic year, your predecessor reported to us about a desire to hire a new, a sixth grade teacher to help to help with the staffing at Wes. And we just heard from you that the kindergarten class that you expect, that the numbers look good. How how are, how do you feel about our, what's the staffing situation like at Wes going into next year? How do you see, how do you see things playing out?
I would say my overarching statement of it seems to be rapidly changing week by week. And some of that is a factor of we had two positions that were known retirements. But as we go along towards the end of the school year, there's definitely a staff member who is considering retirement. And we also have people whose life plans are changing a little bit, and that will greatly impact what positions I end up hiring for. We have a second grade teacher who is now retiring, and so we were planning on internal shifts within the building to fill the sixth grade position. But since that second grade teacher is retiring, now we will be looking to hire somebody. And truly, it it really is a day-to-day operation as far as looking at numbers. Right now, I'm going to be hiring for a school librarian and I'm going to be hiring for another classroom teacher. But I could have more than that depending on what the next couple of weeks look like with staff.
Sounds busy, Cindy. Thank you very much.
Definitely busy.
Hey, I don't see any other questions for you, Cindy. So I think it's Jake's turn.
All right, good evening. Good evening again. I'll try to bring it home here. So graduation for Mount Greylock seniors is June 12th at 11:00. Attendance is by invitation only for Mount Greylock staff, graduates, and their immediate family. We will have, of course, school committee representation there. The ceremony is going to take place outside, rain or shine. Speeches and issuance of diplomas will also be streamed live. We're working out exactly how that'll be streamed, but it will be provided to the to the wider community. At the end, this the ceremony will conclude with a parade through Williamstown ending at Wabika. And then from Wabika, the Lanesboro and Hancock Fire and Police Departments will escort the Lanesboro and Hancock students south into into the town. So second point, May is a busy month. We have the entire school body back. Spring sports are in full swing. Co-curriculars are continuing both in-person and remotely. We have a full schedule of MCAS with seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th graders, along with some select 12th graders. We also have AP testing going on and SATs just recently wrapped up. So it's a, we're we're close to the end, but it's, we have a, we have a full plate. I'd also like to thank our specifically our students, families, and staff, just like Nolan and Cindy said, but but they made it work. And although difficult, I think we had a very successful year. And last but not least, I just want to mention our summer programming. We just finalized our course offerings. We'll be offering multiple summer school, credit-bearing summer so, summer school classes at Mount Greylock. And we'll also have a host of week-long enrichment and remediation camps. So that was just published and sent out to families this afternoon. Also, one point to note about the the summer program, the week of July 6th through July 9th is we're going to target that for a a middle school transition week where we hope to get current sixth, seventh, and eighth graders on campus to to support and encourage a smooth and hopefully anxiety-reduced transition to Mount Greylock. For the programs, everything is is free of charge, tuition's free of charge, and there will be transportation from Williamstown and Lanesboro. So pending any questions from anybody, that is all I have for tonight.
I think Steve has his hand up. Kind of hard to see. We can't hear you, Steve. You're muted.
Thanks. Same question as before. I assume that the remote students are going to be incorporated into the graduation ceremony?
Yes.
And so there's ones who will be there in person, they'll be sitting outdoors?
Say that one more time, sorry.
The students who are coming to Mount Greylock in person will be sitting outdoors together for the commencement?
Everything will be outside, yes.
Excellent.
So bring, there's good, there's, there's lawn seating. There'll also be, you know, seating in the in folks' cars. So if it's raining, make sure you either have an umbrella to sit on the lawn or there's enough room in in your car.
I see a question from Carrie.
Yeah, you said there's a parade after. I assume you're talking about a car parade? And the parade goes through Williamstown? So is this kind of like what happened last year? That they're driving all the way down into town in the Upper Road and then down Route 43 to Wabika and then parting ways?
Yes, exactly, exactly like that.
Nice, okay, cool.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, so I think you're off the hook, Jake. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, appointment of a new member to the finance subcommittee. So when Michelle departed from the school committee, it left a open spot for a school committee members specifically from Lanesboro for the finance subcommittee. And I am hoping to appoint our new member Ursula Malloy to that finance subcommittee. So I would be looking for a motion to appoint Ursula if she is willing to be a part of that subcommittee. Julia?
I'm moving that.
Oh, great. Do I have a second?
Second, open button.
Oh, thank you. Any discussion? Ursula, are you okay with that appointment?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Augustine, I.
Elton, Brian.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you very much. And again, welcome, Ursula. We're so glad that you've joined us. Okay, next up on the agenda is discussion marijuana cultivation in Williamstown and possible vote.
Christina, I am happy to to start this conversation. We just felt as we approached the Williamstown Town Meeting that we ought to have one more opportunity to to give the school committee a chance to weigh in on outdoor cultivation of cannabis. Very grateful. I've I've had the great pleasure of of being an observer in in several planning board meetings thus far in my my six months here on the job. And, you know, we have a very, very dedicated, well-informed, hard-working planning board in Williamstown. And I and I'm sure in in Lanesboro as well, but but, you know, I've been spending time with the Williamstown Planning Board. And and we, of course, and I think I can speak for all the school committee when I say we're very grateful to them for their work. I think I can likely also speak for all of you when I say we understand completely that the the farms and the family farms that surround us on this magnificent campus here of the Mount Greylock Regional School are part and parcel of what this community is and who this community is. Part of its history, and we are, we are very hopeful for the sake of the good of all of us and future generations that that these family farms are part of the future as well in Williamstown and in the Berkshires and in Western Massachusetts. Cannabis cultivation is is allowable by state law now. We see neighboring states, I think likely surrounding us 360 degrees with the exception of the Atlantic Ocean to our east, we will have cannabis cultivation and sale legal in New England and New York State. And and so joining us tonight, and we're very grateful to to him for taking his time to do this. And I'm even more grateful because I told him I thought we'd be ready at 6:30. And here it is, seven, and we're and we're getting there. His attorney, Joel Bard, who has represented the town of Williamstown as town council for, I think, a year or two, or 20, or or 30 perhaps. And and we asked, very grateful to Attorney Bard, just to see if if the school committee had any questions about this. I I will, I'm not going to get the question ball rolling, but I will say, you know, with full understanding that the 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 law of the Commonwealth allows this. I'm not sure there's any school administrator. And and I don't know that there's any superintendent, although I'll only speak for myself. My my hope is that we are not deeply impacted by cannabis cultivation close by to our high school and to our middle school. Lots of reasons for that. You know, none of which are are meant to to impugn anybody that's been working on this and putting in dozens of hours and none of which is about not having tremendous respect for our agricultural community and our agricultural neighbors. But I I, my hope as a superintendent is that the community proceeds very cautiously before it allows i- it's it's regional middle and high school that represents children and families from several towns to 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 be deeply impacted by this. However, very grateful for all the work has been done. Very grateful to Attorney Bard for being here tonight. I I think Attorney Bard, I don't mean to speak for you, but but he can he can answer specifics to this bylaw, specifics to the Cannabis Control Corporation in the state, and really answer questions about what this means from a state level and a local level. And with that, I will hand it over to you, Christina, to call on people to to comment or ask questions. Thank you.
I think I saw Julia first and then Carrie.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I thank you, Jake. You definitely spoke for me. I can say when you said you know that we don't want to have cannabis impacting our students. And I share Andrew Skinner's concern about what message we may send to our students. So I guess my, where my head is at, and I really want to just check these facts. Thank you, Attorney Bard, if you can just do that for me, is my understanding is that doing nothing is actually more, puts us at greater risk of greater impact near our school than path than supporting this particular bylaw. And so doing nothing is actually the more impactful, negatively impactful, potentially negatively impactful thing for our students. So that's question number one. And the other question is, we've had for, I my understanding is we've had four years of outside companies that could come in and they haven't done it. So I just want to confirm those facts that I've been hearing in in and around town.
Yes, so answering question one, you're absolutely right. Right now, there are far fewer protections than there would be if you pass. And and let me make clear, you know, we're we're policy neutral, but what is proposed definitely limits the areas specifically around the high school, but generally around town, limits the areas where marijuana cultivation can occur. That's absolutely correct. And as to the second question, there have not been any agricultural licenses, if you will, and I'll call that, but granted by the town. And as I'm sure you all know, there's a retail outlet, but on Route 2. But there are no approved agricultural marijuana grows in Williamstown.
Okay, Carrie, you're next.
Thanks, Christina. So my questions are actually similar, but not exactly the same as Julia's. So the folks, such as the comments we heard tonight, who say that this is not restrictive enough, even though it is more restrictive than what we have now, that the proposed bylaw is not restrictive enough, there's nothing to stop the planning board from passing further restrictions in the future, right? So if we pass this bylaw, they can continue to work on it? Or is that misleading? Is that, is is this sort of a one and done? That the the goal of the planning board is to stop here? So that's my first question. My second question, I think you kind of already touched on with Julia's second question, which is that even if this is passed, the, anyone who wants, whether it's a local farmer or an outside grower, they're still going to have to come before the town to request permission to establish any kind of a growing situation. So this is not going to automatically approve any specific grow. That is yet another step of approval that would have to take place. So those are my questions.
Thank you.
Okay, well, just to mix things up, I'll answer the second question first. That's right. The, anyone who wants to have a cultivation facility will need a special permit from the Board of Appeals. So that'll be a public hearing process typically. Well, there may be one session. It could be more than one session, but there'll be an opportunity for folks to make comments, whether they're butters, parents of students, or whomever can show up at the hearing and and be heard. The first question was, oh, right, the no, well, your question was, will this zoning bylaw amendment, if passed, be the final word? No, not necessarily. What's going to be before town meeting will be a proposal to amend the zoning bylaw to specifically address cultivation. And the zoning bylaws can be amended at any time. You know, there's a process where the planning board has a public hearing. But ultimately, it's town meeting that decides. The planning board proposes or reviews someone else's proposal. But town meeting would decide. And if, for example, people find it gets, for example, if this gets adopted, gets voted at the upcoming town meeting, and some people are finding it concerning in some respect, they can petition to have the zoning bylaw further amended.
Steve?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify something that I was told is that if we try to change the proposed bylaws on town floor, that there is actually a danger that we could propose something that the state would then reject later and then revert back to what we currently have?
Well, of course.
Well, of course, that would depend on the nature of what somebody proposed. Part of my job at town meeting is to advise the town meeting if some proposal has gone too far in one or another respect. So hopefully, that won't happen because it means I was asleep at the switch. I mean, typically, that's not what happens. So there are two ways in which a an amendment proposed at town meeting could run into trouble. One is if it's what we call outside of the scope of the warrant. So you're going to have, as you may know, there are two different proposals. But someone may attempt to make an amendment that is just completely, well, outside of the scope is the phrase, but just goes way beyond what has been proposed. And in that case, it could be rejected for having been outside of the scope. Frankly, it's unusual that that occurs. So the other way in which it may be deemed illegal, and I'll give you a very concrete example, and I know that this is a cause for concern. So the bylaw requires that any that any marijuana grow facility be at least 500 feet from from the school, specifically in in any school for that matter. So we're frequently asked, well, what if we want to make that 1,000 feet? And let's say to really be extreme. So let's say somebody gets up at town meeting and amends it to say that there be a 3,000-foot buffer. So the state regulations say 500 feet. And they do allow communities to amend the bylaw to make it less than 500 feet, but it's silent as to make it greater than 500 feet. And most rules of statutory interpretation suggest that when the bylaw speaks to going in one direction and allows it, it and and is silent as to requiring greater setback requirements than probably the law and the regulation did not intend for that to happen. So if town meeting were to vote an amendment to make the setback requirement 3,000 feet, you would see me get up, you'd hear me get up and say, in my opinion, that's likely to be denied, disapproved by the Attorney General. Town meeting is not bound by my opinions. So if town meeting were to go ahead and vote that, then yes, you would see that bylaw, in my opinion, disapproved by the Attorney General. So that's an extreme example. And I think the answer to your question generally is that that's unlikely to happen. But in an extreme case like that, that that probably would happen. Thank you.
Jose.
Thanks, Christina. This is, I think, a question about, I think, processes is the theme here or the where my mind is thinking. So Jake, you you've, I think you've you've asked us as a committee to to publicly consider the planning board's proposal to to the town of Williamstown. It's unclear to me what, it says, I think, in our agenda, a vote is is possible. I'm I'm going to guess that the vote would be more a statement by the school committee declaring an opinion about this, this, this bylaw. Is that what, is that what your intention or what's your sense of how you think this could play out?
I I had a couple of layers, Jose, of of intentionality around this. One is that I think it is important that the the Select Board, the Planning Board, residents of Williamstown and potential voters at the town meeting hear what the school committee has to say as this is a topic that that can and perhaps will impact the the students that we are all here to serve. I'm appointed, you're elected, but we're all here to serve those students. So really, one one layer of this is to simply just have one more conversation that that will inform where the Select Board is, where the Planning Board is, and where the town meeting voters will be. The second layer is that should the school committee decide to do so, there is certainly no action that that we could take that is appropriate, trying to be directive around this. That's that's not the school committee's role. Generally, a school committee could adopt something that would be along the lines of a resolution that would suggest to 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 town officials, to town meeting voters that that you, in general, you know, would resolve that this is an okay thing and we would support it. Or in general, you know, the school committee resolves that this is not what is best for the children of the community. And I, there's nothing that can be done to 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 force this through or to prohibit this from happening. But the conversation itself and potentially a resolution, should the school committee opt to go in that direction, good to say very firmly, this is where the elected officials, who are elected to represent the best interest of children, caretakers, families, taxpayers in this community. This is where this elected body is on the issue.
Yeah, if if it's okay, I'd just like to follow up. I think where my my struggle is, is that I believe, I'm not sure we can call upon Andrew. I saw Andrew had his had his hand up. But you know, we are, the the, some of the information that we're receiving from from town members is that, you know, I my sense is, is probably collectively as a committee, you know, we would not generally support cannabis cultivation near school grounds or within the proximity to, you know, you know, close enough to the school that there would be a a noticeable real impact to our students. But what we're being told is that if this bylaw doesn't pass, it's unlikely that the planning board, which has other, you know, issues that it needs to address, it's unlikely the planning board will will revisit this and that we could be left with the worst-case scenario, meaning that there is no, you know, there's nothing really to limit how much cultivation can happen, how close to a property boundary. And it's so it's it's unclear to me how to evaluate the information that we're receiving. And I'm not sure that that, Joel, you you could help us on that. Maybe maybe you could. But, you know, may maybe the question I can I can ask you, Joel, that would certainly help me, is if the bylaw doesn't pass, do we have sufficient mechanisms, imagining that what if what we want as a town is to prevent cannabis cultivation near Mount Greylock Regional School? Do we have enough mechanisms in place in town to prevent that if this bylaw doesn't pass?
Well, you know, as I mentioned in in one of my earlier answers, the planning board may have lost its appetite to develop a bylaw, but anyone can petition to amend the zoning bylaw. So that would be the mechanism. In other words, the the planning board is not the exclusive agent for change as far as the zoning bylaw goes.
And if if no bylaw gets proposed by by any entity, citizen, or 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 group, in terms of what we have on paper right now, are there mechanisms in place to prevent cannabis cultivation? Sort of this widespread cannabis cultivation that that some of us have been told could happen without the bylaw passing?
Well, not really, because the bylaw allows it in certain areas. If someone were to apply and they meet the criteria of the current bylaw, if they're, you know, of of sufficient good standing. So there are there are two approvals required. I mean, people may know it, but I should state it. They would need the local permit, then they also need a permit, an approval from the State Cannabis Control Commission. So they would have to go through those two processes. But there would not be any other way to prevent it. I mean, sometimes people bring litigation to try to do it privately that way. But in terms of what the town can do, it would be limited to going through that public hearing process and vetting the proposal and imposing conditions that might make it more palatable, at least to to some people.
Carrie?
Yeah, but just to just to clarify that, the public hearing process can be very effective, right? We've already had at least one public hearing turn, you know, be responsible for, you know, declining to grant a permit. Is that correct? Yes, I'm asking for, it's a while ago now.
Well, my understanding, I actually wasn't involved in that, is I think the applicant withdrew in the face of a lot of opposition, if I'm not mistaken.
Gotcha. So that's that's the mechanism, is the public opposition. So, I mean, if if this is more restrictive than what we have now and the, if there's an applicant that's within, you know, proximity to the school, it's upon the town to oppose it, townspeople to show up and voice their their opinions and, you know, prevent something from happening that seems problematic for for our schools. This is.
Well, there's that, and there's also the ability to show up and be assured that even though the property is, you know, yay big, they're only going to put it over here. In fact, 2,000 or 3,000 feet away, and they're going to have odor controls, and they're going to have, you know, A, B, and C kinds of, they'll stipulate to certain controls so that people might be satisfied that it won't be visible, it won't be harmful, it won't be odorific and so forth. That's a word.
Julia, did you have a question?
I I take to heart Andrew's point that we are a school committee that represents two different towns. And I don't want to put the Lanesboro members on the spot, but I also recognize that all of the questions and commentary thus far have come from the Williamstown members. And so I just wanted to name that I take that to heart. And I'm, if you had anything, I would love to be hearing it, if you had any thoughts.
Curtis?
I I will say I do feel out of place not being a resident of the town of Williamstown, commenting on policies decided by the town of Williamstown. But there is a very potential impact on the quality of life for our students at our school. I I I find myself thinking a lot about, when I taught in California, there were a lot of ordinances about the minimum distance for liquor stores to elementary and high school campuses. And then I think about Williamstown, and I think about, there's a liquor store right there on on Cole Avenue, just a block away or so from the school. But that, you you can't smell the liquor store from the school. And that's that's a a factor that I I just have a hard time wrapping my head around how to both provide a safe buffer around the school property without infringing on the rights of the people who live in the town and have farming property in that area. So I I, on the one hand, as an advocate for our students and faculty and staff, I I do feel like the school committee is in a position to recommend perhaps revisiting the idea of the buffer around school properties that that was decided against. But on the other hand, as a person who doesn't live in the town, I do as thou wilt. It's your town. I, you know, I'm I'm torn in terms of being a Lanesboro resident and a member of this committee in that regard. So that's where my head uselessly is at.
Julia?
I'm, I, thank you, Curtis. And again, I'm sorry if I put put you on the spot. I I guess this is a question to Attorney Bard. The, I thought we were unable to put a buffer around the school more than what it's set at. And so I guess that's my question to you. I I thought that was not possible.
Well, that's our opinion. You know, I had addressed it earlier. You know, I gave you that brief analysis of. And so our sense is that a court, well, you heard me say it earlier, but that a court would say, well, the the regulations clearly allow for lessening the buffer but not expanding it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
As I said, some of those issues could be addressed through the public hearing process, sort of nudging the facility further away. And I would guess, well, I shouldn't speculate, but you would hope that an applicant would be sensitive to that.
And Julia, I I would have to say that I I echo what what your sentiment is and what Curtis's sentiment is as a Lanesboro resident. I think the school, as a school committee member, we, from Lanesboro, we at this point, we are able to at least say as a, as a resident of Lanesboro with children, with students that go to the district, this is our only way to express the safety that we feel they require. We can't go and vote at a town meeting. And so, and and like Curtis, we respect local farmers and their need to be successful and survive. However, our role, I think, as a school committee member, is is single-minded in that it is for the students. And obviously, we are a regional district. So we want to keep both, we want to keep Williamstown, Hancock, New Ashford, and Lanesboro students safe. And and definitely, you know, if we could put regulations in place that would push these growers further out, then it would make everyone more comfortable. But it sounds like we don't have that capability.
Jose?
Thanks, Christina. I think it seems like we're close to making a decision about whether we put forward a motion for a resolution or we pause debate and and leave it to the Williamstown Planning Board to make its case to the full town and and then and then and then see what happens at the town meeting. I think I think if we were, if there were were a motion for a resolution, I have a sense of how the committee might might be swayed, but it's unclear to me whether whether we 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 need need to pass a resolution. I'd love to hear from my fellow committee members about how strongly we feel about passing a resolution.
Julia?
Let Steve go. Yeah, go to Steve first.
I I I agree with not passing a resolution. I think this conversation was valuable, and I think this conversation serves the purpose. I think this is also a great opportunity to encourage people to come to the town meeting to inform themselves of the issues, to look at the scientific research, specifically what does the research say about the odors and have this discussed on town floor.
Thanks, Steve. Julia?
Swirling in my head.
Oop, we're losing your audio. Can't hear you.
Do this for a minute. Um, the debate that's swirling in my head is this combination of I under, absolutely, we're here for the students. That is our job. And and while we, I understand the plight of farmers and I want to support farming, our job as elected members of the school committee is to make sure we're doing what's in the best interest of the students. And I guess that's the piece that I'm struggling with in that if the option is this bylaw or no bylaw, then this bylaw is in in my mind is in the better interest of our students. And so I'm I'm trying to understand if it's not, is there another, is there another likely alternative? And if the challenge is that trying to bring something to the floor, I think that's what happened last year, and it got, I missed, unfortunately, I missed town meeting last year, and it didn't, so nothing happened because somebody tried to amend it from the floor. So if we do nothing, then I I worry we are, you know, we're going to end up in the same place we're in. And I'd rather move us forward to better protect our our students than do nothing.
Jose?
Thanks. Julie, I I, you know, I, your your perspective really resonates. Thanks. Julie, I, I, you know, I, your, your perspective really resonates with me. My, my worry is that if, if we don't, for instance, that, that is my worry, if, if hypothetically, we, we don't, as a, as a committee, pass a resolution that effectively recommends that the town rejects this, this proposal, are, are we by default saying that we're okay with cannabis cultivation in the, you know, in proximal to school grounds? And I think that, that, that worries me, that without, without our committee issuing a definite statement about our, our stance on cannabis cultivation near the school, are, are we not doing what we should do as a school committee? Think, I think I said something there. I, I got lost in my thoughts.
Carrie, did you want to jump in?
So is it possible for Jose, for instance, to propose a resolution that takes a position on cultivation in proximity to school grounds as opposed to taking a position on the bylaw amendment? Does that, I mean, let's do what we can to make clear our position on that. And then we know it's up to the town to vote on the bylaw amendment, but at least we're clarifying our job as representatives.
I think you've got that. I think you've nailed it. That's the thing to do.
Okay. Go for it, Jose.
Well, I was going to ask, ask our good friend Joe, whose voice we haven't heard from yet in this, this hour and a half that we spent together. Joe, is there any bunny chance, could you offer up an example of language that might, that might be effective in terms of the resolution that we, we might like to pass, as Carrie, I think, has, has, has described it?
I, I think the impossible position that you're in is that, that the Towns Council has indicated that it's highly unlikely that any resolution or any, any bylaw could be passed at a town meeting that would create a larger buffer around the school. And so, given that that's not an option, passing a resolution that suggests that is an option might lead to some voters who are not as educated as we are here, thinking that that's the bylaw to pass. So that would be my concern. A motion that you could pass would be to say that you want something that is at least as restrictive as the proposed bylaw, preferentially something that is more restrictive and would make it less likely that growing would occur within close proximity to the school, and just leave it at that. But it's a totally, this is the least, I am not educated on this topic in the way you might, you might desire.
Carrie?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really interesting point, Joe. Thank you for, for pointing that out. But my thinking was more that the thinking about those next steps, right? So to say that we would like something at least as restrictive might also invite more amendments to the amendment on town meeting. So to clarify that we would support, I mean, we could say that we support this amendment, but that we hope that the that any attempt to come within proximity of school grounds in future be met with very strict scrutiny on the part of the town. You know, that's essentially what we want. We, we know that there's only so much we can get through the bylaw. And that there, those, those other steps, those other approval processes are where we need to ask people to take a stand. And if not reject outright, then at least scrutinize to the best of our ability and to our utmost to make sure that we are ensuring the safety of our kids.
Jose?
I, that really resonates with me as well. I think my, then the challenge for me becomes, you know, if we, if we go this route and we, we hope, you know, that whoever's going to be approving, you know, a, a farmer's petition to, to cultivate cannabis, will protect the school. We, we ended back to the place where we are now, where, you know, where the public, where the town during, what's the, Joel can help me here, what happens in the town when someone puts forward a request to grow cannabis as it stands, but that, the, the town step up and, and publicly push back against any, any proposal to grow cannabis. It, it seems like if we, if we pass a resolution as a committee that supports the bylaw but requests that the town protect the school as much as it can, that's effectively where we are now, more or less. I think that, that's my worry.
So I guess the question is, where are we at? Do we want to pass some type of resolution, or do we want to let the discussion stand where it is? I think we're all pretty much on the same page in terms of where we would want to draw the line. The question is, do we need a formalized resolution, or don't we? And if we do want to make one, what, what is the language?
That, I think, just stepping, I think that's a great question. I think I could see three things happening. You know, when, when Jake first introduced this to us, I was hesitant for us to get involved. But I, I feel like we would be, I'm not sure the right verb here, but, but not, you know, holding up our end of the bargain, living up to our responsibilities by not, by not making a statement about our position on this bylaw. So I think, you know, if we, if we move a resolution that as a committee, we recommend rejecting, that the town rejects this bylaw. If that fails, meaning if we don't, you know, if the majority of our committee doesn't, doesn't approve of that resolution, there could be a, another motion for a resolution along the lines of what Carrie had just posed. So I'm going to stick my neck out and, and I don't even know the right verbiage here, but you can help me out, Christina, to make a motion that as a committee, we pass a resolution that recommends that the town of Williamstown rejects this bylaw because of its real impacts on, you know, yeah, because of the impacts that cannabis cultivation will have on our school. Is that, is that possible? That I just do something, is what I'm asking.
So before we, before there's a, a second, can I just make a comment that it's not a, it's not a bylaw, it's a bylaw amendment? So we have a bylaw. The town has already passed a bylaw permitting cultivation. So this is an amendment to restrict, you know, the parameters for cultivation. So your, your, your motion is to reject or?
Bylaw.
To make resolution.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And, and because, you know, to, just to offer up context.
We should second it. Sorry, I'm going to step in for Christina here. Second it before we.
Thanks, Carrie.
I'm not going to second it.
Do I have a second on that motion? Okay, so hearing none. Sorry, Steve, I can't see you over there.
Yep. So I'm not in favor of this, but I will second it so that it can be discussed.
Okay. So we have a motion to make a resolution to reject the bylaw amendment. That's been moved by Jose and seconded by Steve. Discussion. Jake?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to, to enter this discussion. I know it's the school committees to have. To me, the most important thing that can come from this conversation is, is some general agreement, whether it takes the form of a vote or not. I think it's, it's actually already taken the form of a conversation among people who are passionate about the community's children. But the, the most important thing that can come from this is a consensus from the school committee that the school committee's expectation of the community is that any consideration of growing cannabis within proximity to the school is taken with the utmost seriousness and with the, with the wellness of, of children in mind, the health of children in mind, and how it impacts the, the, the 80 or 90 adults that come here to serve children on a daily basis. How it impacts particularly in August and September and October, and maybe even into November, when, when my understanding is the aroma is at its strongest, that it impacts the Williams cross-country team that uses our course, how it impacts the, the dozen or so other high schools that come and run cross-country here and play soccer here, and the, the families of those people. So I, I don't know, it does strike me, Attorney Bard, I would please ask you to correct me if I'm wrong. It does strike me that this particular bylaw is more protective of, of the school than, than the, the current state of affairs in Williamstown. That seems clear to me. So I, I don't know that this bylaw not passing offers us any, at the town meeting, offers us any additional protections. In fact, I think it's likely that it offers less. So again, I'll reiterate, to me, the most important thing that can come from this conversation is the elected school committee's expectation to the rest of the elected officials and to the, the community we serve here in Williamstown and Lanesboro, that, that gravity is expected every time there is the potential for this to happen within proximity to the school and our students and our employees.
Well, I have two, two comments. Yes, I agree with your summary. That, that's exactly right. And again, my role is not to get involved in policy, but perhaps to be helpful, I could suggest that the committee could vote to authorize the chair or another spokesperson to say essentially what your interim superintendent said, to say that at town meeting, that it was the consensus of the committee, and then someone can look at the notes of what was just said and report that to town meeting.
Jose?
Thanks, Joel. And I'll just, just for the record, our, our very much full-time superintendent.
Sorry. We got confused, the interim town manager. Sorry, Jake, didn't want to.
No, 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 don't, don't, don't scare him away, please.
I thought my gig was up there for a minute. I was, thank you, Jose.
No, I, I'm glad we're having this, this discussion, and I think it's important that, you know, our towns see how we vote on this and understand why we're taking the stand that we do, that we, that we will take. You know, my, you know, there, there are a, a number of competing perspectives on this. I think the one that overwhelms me at the moment is that by not taking a firm stance against this proposed bylaw amendment, I worry that by default, we, you know, at least, you know, we're, we're inviting cannabis cultivation in proximity to the school. We can ask that favors be done for us in behalf of our students, staff, and teachers. But there's no requirement at the moment that the deciding boards, you know, have, have to, have to do, in quotes, right by us. And I think at the moment, where we stand in terms of, you know, public engagement with any proposal, as the laws currently stand for cannabis cultivation, they seem to do a sufficient job at, at least deterring potential cannabis growers in town. So that, that, that's my, that's my, my stance, but I honestly, the things I've heard really resonate with me across the committee.
If I may, my understanding is a little bit different, and I'm not going to be voting on the bylaw amendment, but I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify my understanding. My understanding, Jose, is that the bylaw amendment will make the restrictions tougher for cultivation closer to the school. And if it doesn't pass, it'll be easier. And so I think the resolution I was hearing we wanted to make was to support the bylaw amendment, but also put forth, we want the town to remember that the middle high school sits in the middle of this very productive farmland, and our kiddos and our staff and our administrators and visiting sports teams and Williams College kids are going to be confronted by the potential odors of this particular crop of plant. And that was my understanding of where we were going, not that we wanted to reject it, but that we wanted to support it.
Yeah, I think, I think, Christina, that's, I thank you for that, that question. I, I'm torn, and I, and I respect many of the members of our Williamstown Planning Board that are proposing this to, to the town. I, I can read it as something different. I can, I can see this as, as just the way you've pitched it, but I can also see it as we are making our, the mechanisms to allow existing farmers to cultivate cannabis. You know, we're, we are making that process much more efficient. And enabling and supporting, you know, it's being pitched to us as a mechanism for supporting our small farmers. If it were not a mechanism to support our small farmers, meaning that, you know, there's nothing to stop our, 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 the farmers of Williamstown to, to cultivate cannabis now. It's, it's unclear to me why they would be pitching this as something that would be beneficial to our farming community in Williamstown.
I see Steve's hand up, and then Julia.
Thank you. So I, I basically agree with the discussion that's going on in terms of the consensus of our concerns. And this is why I don't think we need a formal vote. I, I think we're pretty unanimous on our concerns, and then that can be communicated. This is a complicated issue that I think is better discussed in detail at the town meeting, where you have the planning boards, where you have the people who have the proposed modifications, and this can all be discussed where both sides can present.
Thanks, Steve. Julia?
So I, I just want to respond to Jose's question, maybe, and, and or interpretation, and ask, I guess, Attorney Bard, if you can just confirm that how I thought about this, or correct me. And Jose, I hear you saying this has been positioned as something to help the farmers, so it's going to help the process be more efficient, so more likely to generate the request for, you know, the grow permit. My understanding is the positioning to help the farmers is about the debate of should it be 5,000 or should it be 100,000 square feet, if that's the right space? Not should we have the amendment, or should we not have the amendment? And so, you know, I don't, I did not understand that this would make it easier for people to get a permit or, or a more efficient process. And I guess that's the question to Attorney Bard.
Well, the process will be the same. It will be a special permit from the Board of Appeals. This bylaw is more detailed than the original bylaw. Now, let me give you this little bit of history that some of you may know, but Williamstown was, if not the first, one of the first communities to regulate marijuana. You all know that it was legalized through a ballot question in 2016. The state was very slow to roll it out. And, and towns and cities were slow to adopt bylaws and ordinances. And Williamstown did it very quickly and said not very much really about anything other than retail and defined a, 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 a pretty narrow area where retail would be permitted. There was concern that it not be permitted in the downtown around the college, and so you know where it's ended up. So the focus had been on allowing a location for retail, prohibiting it elsewhere, and not a whole lot of thought was given to the other. And not a whole lot of thought was given to the other types of marijuana establishments. And the Cannabis Control Commission hadn't even adopted their regulations at that time. And so the town, you know, to its credit in a sense, jumped out and said, you know, our greatest concern right now is not to have retail downtown. And and it was left at that. So this is a a closer look at regulating agriculture. And it regulates it much more definitively. I mean, there are a lot of, in addition to narrowing the areas where it would be allowed, it has other language in there as well. So it's a long-winded way of agreeing with with the way you propose the issue, the way you frame the issue.
Okay. Any further discussion? So we have a motion that was made by Jose and seconded by Steve. All in favor?
And his motion was to
Reject.
Reject the bylaw amendment. So Bowen, no.
Conry, no.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, bye, no.
Green, no.
Malloy, can I abstain?
You may.
Okay.
I'll assume that's abstain. Miller, no.
Okay. So that motion does not pass. Um, so we can leave it at that. We can make a statement about our objections to the proximity of marijuana growing near the school. Carrie.
So I really like the suggestion that Attorney Bard made. And I think Jake has made some very good statements here. And I think if the chair and the superintendent want to put together a statement on behalf of the committee and have it read at town meeting, I would be happy to deliver it or the chair could deliver it. I'll be at town meeting, so I can deliver it on behalf of the committee.
I will move that we do that.
Bowen moves.
Any discussion?
I I guess my question is, given how wide, oh, sorry, I just jumped in.
No, it's fine.
I guess my question is, um, I is there a process by which we see the statement before it gets read at town meeting?
Well, I can jump in on that. You've got an open meeting law issue. Are you going to have another meeting before town meeting? Another school committee meeting?
No.
Well, the perhaps one sort of thin ice here. If the full-time superintendent wanted to draft something working with one member and send it out, members could send their comments back to the superintendent. But if if comments are shared among members, then you've got a
Yeah, I I would suggest that Jake and Christina work on something based on the conversation that we've had tonight. I mean, I feel pretty confident that they're going to capture, you know. But then Jake could send it to all of us as Attorney Bard just suggested, and people can call him if they have concerns. But, you know, I I think it's unlikely, you know, it's it's not going to be a huge edit probably at that point.
Great, thank you. Okay. So I have a
Curtis has a
Oh, sorry, Curtis.
No problem. I did want to just, if if you're drawing from the notes of this meeting to generate the content of that statement, I did want to throw onto the pile that I've heard a lot of interesting background noise. I heard a lot of people mentioning like what's what what's appropriate for our students, for our faculty, for the other bodies that use the campus for athletics or what have you. I would consider including something in the statement that this school and grounds are a massive investment by the taxpayers of that town. And I would caution anybody that is given the responsibility to weigh and approve applications for the cultivation of cannabis, be mindful if that approval might diminish greatly the value of the investment that the towns have made in this school and the grounds associated with it. Just throwing that out there.
Thank you, Curtis. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Bowen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, bye, I.
Green, I. Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. We can move on to the next agenda item, which is discussion to review special permit for a wireless communications tower at 580 Oblong Road in Williamstown. Jake.
Thank you. And and Attorney Bard, we're very grateful for your time and expertise this evening. That was mu- much appreciated by all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Nice seeing everyone. And I'm sure we'll see all of you at town meeting.
Take care.
Thank you.
Good night.
Again, this the discussion to review the special permit for a wireless communications tower on 580 Oblong, which a property to which the regional school districts, middle and high school campus isn't a butter. I have attended one planning board meeting on this, and that was probably a month and a half, two months ago. There is another meeting, I believe, on May 20th, which I will be electronically attending again. And, you know, just full disclosure, this is my sixteenth year as a superintendent. Is it is my sixth month as the superintendent of a regional school district that actually operates as its own miniature governmental entity and that actually owns its own property. And so I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out your expectations of me when we have things going on in the community that will potentially impact our our campus. And as as Curtis said, the massive investment that that two communities have made in this in this campus and in its buildings. No expectations for where this conversation goes. We simply wanted to have a place and a space to have this conversation publicly in case the school committee as individuals or or particularly as a body has strong feelings on a a a mobile phone tower abutting the school property. And I and I would suggest that I believe in 2012, and and I don't know who was around in 2012. But in 2012, the school committee itself, I believe, was the requesting party to put a mobile communications tower on the school campus as a means of serving the community and generating income.
Carrie.
So I was around at that time, and that that's correct. I think I shared a lot of or some documentation with Jake and went through some of it myself. It was not a decision without controversy. And there were sort of competing elements going on at that time. The main impetus for, I guess, for bringing the proposal forward to the committee was from the long, what was that, a long-range finance committee, I think. And the main impetus was to generate income for the district. And I think we did hear from someone recently who reminded us that the that school districts are supposed to kind of have first dibs on these kinds of things. I don't remember specifically what that communication was. Let's go back through their our emails. But it ended up not passing because of the zoning board of appeals. It didn't make it through the zoning board of appeal, so it kind of died. And I think by that point, it had lost support on the on the committee as well. So it was not a happy situation, as as I recall. And I do also remember that Phelps Farm was interested in hosting the tower at that point as well. But I I think that that was the kind of thing where the the school had priority over over non-school properties. But I and I don't remember why it didn't, when this, when it didn't pass at the school, why it didn't then just get picked up by, you know, another entity. So on that part, I'm a little bit foggy. But, you know, I think a lot of the concerns that were raised at the time had to do with health, had to do with, you know, obviously, the health of our our schoolchildren. You know, what is the, what are the impact of the signals of the, you know, any kind of environmental impact? Does the visual impact, I think, is what eventually killed the proposal at that point because the cell towers were not perhaps what they are today. But they were not visually appealing. And in addition to being a valuable, you know, school building and property, this is one of the most gorgeous views in Berkshire County. And people didn't want a cell tower to be anywhere near anywhere in proximity to the gorgeous views that are enjoyed by so many from Mount Greylake. So that's a little bit of what I remember at the time. And I don't know what the visual impact is from Mount Greylake to the Phelps Farm property. But I do know that they are basically right next to each other. So I can't imagine not seeing the tower from the third floor of of Mount Greylake, depending on what view you have from the classroom.
Can you give us a point of reference, Carrie, or anybody as to the location of the cell tower? Like, you're looking at the school, is it to the left? Is it to the right? For those of us not familiar with where 580 Oblong Road is?
And how close is it to the school?
On the map that we already have.
I will, I will pull up on Google Maps and show you the the property. And then Joe and I can commiserate. There was a, I forget what the name of the test was that was done, but there was a test conducted that involves a balloon, a large balloon tethered to a, you know, two or 300 feet of rope. And and I saw it the day that they, so I I think I can give you a decent-ish idea if I can just have a second to 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 pull up a Google Maps and do a screen share.
And while you're doing that, the the other piece that I left out from when we were looking at the potential for citing it at Mount Greylake, there wasn't endangered species that was within proximity of where they were thinking about putting the tower when they were thinking about putting it on on Mount Greylake or on the on the school property. So that was another issue that came up at the time.
Yeah. So and again, I will, I will continue to to be in attendance at the planning board meetings and and hear about the where this is going. But you can see where I'm moving my cursor in a circle now. That's the campus where 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 our kids come to school every day. This parcel is 580 Oblong Road. I I cannot recall from the last meeting that I attended, which was, I I believe, in March or April. But but the 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 tower is my recollection is that it's located. And I don't know if the information that 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 Mr. Groff from the from the town planning office sent along to you that's in your packet is anymore designates or or Julia, maybe, did you mention that there was a map in that packet? I can go and look at that, too. But my recollection is that it was sort of in a in a in an area around, you know, in in this ballpark.
Jose.
And this is, this is eerily familiar to to the discussion that we just had about cannabis cultivation in that it seems like some of the are proponent arguments, folks who who are proposing the development of this cell tower are arguing that, you know, it's smaller in scale and scope than the proposal that I think we've heard was was proposed when Carrie was involved. I believe this was in 2018, I believe. And the folks who are proposing the cell tower are arguing, or at least there are arguments out there that, you know, if this if this fails, there is nothing to stop, for instance, you know, a large corporation from from suing for the right to build a cell tower, you know, to support their business. And that this is the best way for for us to to both minimize impact while enabling, you know, cellphone companies to to provide for their customers. And I guess maybe, and I'll use, take advantage of that pause. Are we, I don't know if if this is on here again for us to pass yet another resolution or 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 to to not pass another resolution that articulates a an opinion by the school committee on this on this proposal?
Jose, I, if I may, Christina, again, this, we we always put, anybody following at home, you know, we have an agenda item and then we have a vote. That vote is really a placeholder in case it's the will of the committee to to take some action or another. Again, I think at this point, this was really informational and an opportunity for individual school committee members to weigh in with with strong feelings one way or the other. You know, or or to weigh in as a body, should should there be a reason to do so? But but really, it was just a space and a place to to have the conversation. And and if there are questions that you, again, as individuals have regarding this this proposal, you can, you can certainly communicate them to me. You can certainly communicate them to to Andrew Groff directly as as residents. But you can certainly get those questions and concerns to me. And I will be happy to share them with 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 Andrew, who is incredibly responsive and 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 will get the right answers back with with great speed. So really, just a a space and a place to have the conversation, should the committee desire to have a conversation.
Thanks. Does anyone want to have any further discussion on this? Are we ready to move on to the next agenda item? Everyone's ready to move on? Okay. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is Policy Subcommittee, and I will turn this over to Jose.
Thank you, Christina, and I will be be succinct. As of Monday, we're at, on Monday, we, the Policy Subcommittee had its, it's very As of Monday, we're at, on Monday, we, the policy subcommittee had its, its very first meeting. I believe it might be, uh, the very first policy subcommittee meeting of the Mount Greylock School District, and it went very well thanks to, um, uh, the folks who were there with me, Carrie and, and Julia and Jake. Uh, at that meeting, we, uh, began discussing and reviewing various elements of our existing school policies, um, centering on remote participation in school committee meetings, guidelines for remote meeting, public comment, and the use of electronic messaging by school committee members. That work is in progress, and we hope that in, in subsequent policy sub, subcommittee meetings, that we'll be ready to, uh, to share and put forward to, um, the full committee recommendations or motions for amendments to our existing policy. Before we move on to a discussion of our motion on the policy for student travel, are there any questions or comments from the full committee to, uh, to me or other members of the policy subcommittee?
Steve, just a historical comment. We actually did have a policy subcommittee of the old Mount Greylock Committee before the transition committee, which then devolved into liaisons. This was in fact, one of the reasons behind, I think, the push for regionalization, as we had three essentially very similar policy subcommittee discussions for administrative staff for Williamstown, Lanesboro and Mount Greylock.
Thanks, Stephen. All right. If there are no other questions, um, I can move on to a, uh, discussion that the policy subcommittee had on the interim policy for student travel during COVID policy. The, I will cut to the chase and say that the policy subcommittee unanimously approved a motion to the full committee to rescind or, or, um, roll back, I think is another, another verb or verbiage used for what we're recommending, um, this interim policy. And what I'd like, who I'd like to invite Jake, uh, to explain, um, some of the motivations behind, uh, this unanimous recommendation and motion.
Yeah, the, uh,
Point of order, sorry, point of order, since the subcommittee made a motion that is active now and it needs to be seconded on the floor of the committee.
Thanks, Carrie.
Uh, Steve, I will second.
And now I think we can ask Jake.
And I, I, I will, you know, y- you all know the, 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 the truncated process for getting to this policy, the, uh, the, the application of this policy. What was a, was a challenge. Uh, the, the policy was very well intentioned. Uh, it was at a time when there was some concern about COVID numbers going up. It was at a time when the commissioner had ordered elementary students back to school. Uh, middle school students were, were right around the bend of coming back. And, and it was at a time when we really wanted to get our high school students back as quickly as we possibly could, so they could get all of the in-person learning in that they could, but particularly for our seniors, that we could get those seniors, some of whom have been together since their very first day of kindergarten or pre-K, uh, so we could get them together to, to enjoy each other's company in the, in the remains of, of this school year that's quickly drawing to a close for the seniors. Uh, a- at the same time, we were, we were in, um, we had not hit full stride with our staff being vaccinated. And, and we, we had hit full stride thanks to Joe's work and the work of the school nurses in our poll testing. Uh, and, and then to, to cap all of that off, we had spring break, uh, upcoming. And, uh, and travel to, to really anywhere where folks could get to and get back in a week. Um, this policy was potentially, uh, some, some real overreach on my part and, and possibly, you know, on your part, as I asked you to support it. Uh, I w- will end by saying two things. First of all, we think the policy was largely successful. We got all of our kids back to school. Um, w- we have everybody, including our high schoolers in, uh, a couple of weeks ahead of where many of our neighbors have their high schoolers in. Um, and we had no real uptick in, in COVID cases as a result of spring break travel. Uh, this, the second point that I would make before I, um, before I end my piece and, and, and ask you to consider joining the policy subcommittee and voting to rescind this policy, is that, uh, this policy ultimately wound up impacting about 45 individual students among our three schools. And, um, some of those students and their families really made deep sacrifices in order to abide by this policy. And we are very grateful to everybody who, who made an effort to, to be a good neighbor and to, um, abide by this policy as, uh, as, as, um, strange and as difficult as it's sometimes got to do so. So, um, just a, a, as a leader and, and as a neighbor, deep gratitude to the people who, who, who helped make this policy impactful by actually following it, um, some of whom really had to hold their noses while doing so. We're very grateful to them and very grateful to the whole community for, for helping us get all of our kids pre-K through 12 back into school, really nearly for the entire month of May. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's good stuff and we're grateful. At this point, spring break is over and it, it appears that it is time to, to pull back this policy. We're seeing changes almost daily on the vaccine front and who is able to be vaccinated, um, some, some, I think some pretty large-scale changes coming in from the CDC today around, uh, the, the necessity of folks that are fully vaccinated to be masked indoors and outdoors. It does not change our, our practices. We have not had that guidance from the state nor from the Department of Elementary or Secondary yet. But it is, it is apparent that it is time to roll back this policy. Thank you.
Jose, this is your show, so you guys.
Christina, I was thinking it was still your show. Uh, thank you, Jake. Uh, any, any other, I think, uh, Stephen?
Yes. Thank you. So I'm glad we're working together today to revisit the travel policy. But I think it's important to describe in some detail what happened, so we can be more aware of these issues and better serve the community as we navigate future policy decisions. Our adoption policy states we should have a first reading without a vote and in a second reading with a vote. We changed the travel policy on families and gave them less than a month's notice and no opportunity for their concerns to be heard. We should consider going forward, what is a reasonable advance notice on future policies, as many people had already made plans that followed state and CDC COVID guidelines. We also created a policy with no mechanism for appeal and no considering, consideration for nuances. And we had it only applied to families. There were no guidelines for staff or for teachers, and that undercuts how critical this concern was. Further, after it was passed, several people reached out to the school committee and to me with concerns. I asked for an agenda item for the April 8th meeting to discuss this, which was well before spring break. That was denied, as was bringing it up under the 48-hour exemption. So two of just several issues with the policy are the following. The first is, as written, the travel policy is only about a return to in-person instruction. It is not about participation in athletics and extracurriculars. There's a tremendous difference between being in person indoors with masks off while eating and playing sports outdoors masked. And the second is that, as written, the travel policy does not allow any of our students from Vermont to return to in-person instruction unless they enter Massachusetts at least once a day. So these are just some of the issues. These concerns were brought to district council who agreed that these points are correct. This was shared by the superintendent with the entire school committee. Rather than inform the community, we continued to selectively enforce an incorrect interpretation of a policy incorrectly adopted. So our failures here indicate to me the wisdom of two school committee policies, one which is still active and one which is not. And I would like to encourage the school committee that going forward, we should continue the one that is active and we should have the policy subcommittee look at restoring the other. So the first is that we should have a first and second reading of policies before we vote to give members of the community an opportunity to express concerns, so we can discuss and possibly adjust. The second is that school committee members should be able to add agenda items to meetings. In the past, two school committee members could add an item. If we are constantly having meetings cluttered by addition after addition, I would agree that it is time to reconsider such a request. But in my time on the school committee, and I believe I am the longest continuously serving member right now, only twice have I remembered school committee agenda requests that were denied by members. So I understand that these are challenging times and I understand that people's intentions are good, but good intentions are not enough. Nor can we enforce what we wanted to pass instead of what we passed. We have a responsibility to carefully debate these issues and weigh the benefits and the consequences. We have unfortunately filled our community with this policy, and hopefully we can learn from this and do better going forward. So I strongly support the repeal of this policy, and I also strongly support that in the future we follow our adoption policy and have a first and second reading as we are supposed to. And that school committee members, if two members want to bring forward an agenda item, can have that added. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Any other comments or questions? If not, I believe we are ready to vote on the motion, um, by the policy subcommittee. Is that, is I, I hand it over to you, Christina?
Uh, no, you can take it. Um, you, the policy subcommittee made the motion and Stephen seconded, so you can call the vote.
Perfect. Let's call the vote. Roll call.
Owen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila enthusiastically, I.
The motion passes unanimously. The subcommittee, the full committee now has, uh, is passed that, the motion to rescind the interim policy for student travel during COVID.
Thank you, Jose.
Thanks, Christina.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is business administration, administrator update, and I will turn it over to Joe Bergeron.
Thank you very much. I have, I have four items here. They are all incredibly quick and very much procedural, which, which hopefully will, will be, will be welcomed. The first, uh, the, the first two are, we have recently, um, been notified by the state that we have been awarded grants that, we had applied for. They are competitive grants, so unlike entitlement grants where just by existing, we, we receive them. These are grants where I would, I would love to thank, um, our food services director, Tammy Jennings, and buildings and grounds director, um, Tim Sears for their work in applying for the school nutrition grant, which, as you'll see in your packet, um, it, it means that, uh, Lanesboro Elementary School is receiving a little bit over $8,000 for a brand new convection oven, um, that will replace the one that, that was, uh, put in place when the school was originally built. It, it'll be a huge upgrade for Lanesboro Elementary School and we're, we're really excited about it. So without further ado, I would love a motion, um, someone to move a motion to, um, accept the school nutrition grant. Please.
Second.
Owen moves. Elfenbein seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Owen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
That motion passes. Thank you.
Outstanding. And then the, the second grant, um, the Student Opportunity Act, um, evidence-based programs grant that, uh, is both, uh, a summer for, for this summer as well as a school year for this coming school year. Or sorry, it's school year for this school year and summer for, um, this next fiscal, this upcoming fiscal year. Joel Brookner, uh, our director of curriculum had, um, worked tirelessly on this application. It was one that, you had seen a presentation on, uh, earlier in this school year. It is to support the early literacy initiatives at our two elementary schools. The assessment, the rollout of, of new ELA programs. And, uh, and so when the award was announced from the state, um, I, I think we were, we were all thrilled at, at the work that Joel had done and, um, the way that we now have, um, it's a two-part grant, so one is $53,002. The other part is $6,720. And, uh, and so many thanks from, from me and from all of us to Joel for all of the work that went into that. So similar to the other grant, um, what I would love is for someone to move a motion to accept the SOA grant as awarded by the state.
Bowen moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Elfenbein seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Owen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
That motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Now, moving from grants to budget, um, on March 25th, the school committee passed, uh, the, the FY22 school district budget, um, as presented, and during, within that motion, we indicated that excess and deficiency use in the amount of $240,000 will be a part of the overall budget. Once the necessary funds are certified, if those funds are not certified, the district's use of the tuition revolving account will be increased by $240,000. I can happily announce that the excess and deficiency account, um, was certified by the state, um, since then. And so what our auditor recommended that we do is move and pass a motion to acknowledge that excess and deficiency in the amount of $240,000 will formally be planned as a part of the overall budget for FY22.
So moved.
Green moves. Do I have a second? Bowen seconds. Any discussion? All in, oh, sorry, go ahead, Carrie.
So, um, we are not required to revote the budget because the budget was voted with that, um, in mind.
Yeah, th- this is really just, just reaffirming something now that it is a a sure thing.
Great. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
This may need to be a different item, or maybe it already is, but what was the E and D certified at?
The E and D was certified. I'll need to pull up the exact number. 906, uh, let me get the exact number. It's a excess and deficiency was certified in the amount of my eyes are starting to fail me.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Owen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
That motion passes. Thank you.
The final item I have for you, which is in your packet, is, um, the final invoice for the Williamstown Elementary Schools, um, ERV, uh, energy replacement ventilator coils. That, uh, that was a project out of the Williamstown Elementary School Renewal Fund from Williams College, um, that was approved to go forward a month or two ago. Um, the contractor has since completed the work and what you have before you is the invoice. It should be noted that the invoice is $850 higher than was originally quoted as a result of the system requiring more free on than was originally expected or hoped. So that is one, one difference from what you had previously approved, but this invoice is in front of you. For hopefully a, a vote to approve payment out of the Williams College, the Williamsstown Elementary School Renewal Fund provided by Williams College.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Green moves. Bowen seconded. I think that was you, Julia. I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Owen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Thank you, Joe. Next up on our agenda is superintendent report, and I turn it over to Jake McCandless.
Yeah, thank you, Christina. Two items tonight. One's very quick. One is a little longer and as it should be. The, the legal obligation of the school committee relative to school choice is to annually opt whether to continue to participate in school choice or not participate in school choice. We, we remain steadfast in the fact that we are not steadfast in how many slots exactly we will be able to open at each of our schools, as Ms. Sheehy expressed lightly during her presentation. We, we are a district that, that from year to year has about 20 students at homeschool. This year we have 60. We had, you know, many come back when we hit in-person instruction again. We anticipate having students come back. We know that the Berkshire real estate market is quite volatile right now, which is a good thing for anybody that's, that's selling a house as people realize they can work almost anywhere and live in our beautiful Berkshires. So we are just now prepared to say how many slots we have. Anything we would give you tonight around the specifics around open slots would be conservative to the point of being almost meaningless. And in that, we would say maybe one or two spots at each school. So we want to put a finer point on that. But we are obligated to report to the state by June 1st whether we intend to continue to remain active in the school choice program. And just to be clear for anybody watching from home or for any school committee members that this is your first time through a school choice vote, a district has no say in students leaving their district in order to school choice into another school. The district has 100% say in whether students from neighboring communities can come into our school district. So tonight I would recommend that, that we affirm and vote to affirm that we will remain active participants in the Commonwealth's School Choice Program. And that's really what this agenda item is, is that we are, we are merely affirming so that we can report to the Commonwealth that we are going to remain active within the school choice program.
Can I just ask a question of order? Are we required to vote to affirm or is it a screen? Okay, so this is not, I mean, if we don't take a vote at all, we're continuing in the program, we would have to vote in order to not participate.
Yes. And, and if your intention was not to participate, that would likely trigger our need to have a well-publicized public hearing to, to discuss that and to capture the community's views on that. But you're correct, Carrie, as usual, that, you know, simply taking no action at all means that we remain within the Commonwealth School Choice Program.
Okay, so this is to publicly announce that we are participating, but we're, you're not hearing about the slots yet because we're just not ready.
Right. Julia?
I 100% understand the concept of moving enrollment numbers. I totally get that. And I'm also curious by when, like what, but what do we tell families? What's, what are the deadlines?
Our, our, our school committee policy suggests that within, I believe, and I'm, I may be misquoting, but really very close to the proximity of the end of the school year, which is June 18th. We have our first round of, of a lottery, for lack of a better term. I have had conversations with several parents. Stacy has had conversations with several parents. All of our principals have had. And, you know, our advice at this point is, you know, please apply. And we have, we have quite a few applications, particularly for our early grades at Lanesboro Elementary and Williamstown Elementary. So our, our advice to families is please, please apply. Please don't ever hesitate to contact us to find out what's going on and when. And we will be notifying you if we have your application. But in fairness to families and caretakers, parents to parent or parent to caretaker, please make sure you have Plan B, C, and D active as well. Because, you know, you, if you are not going to send your child to the place where you reside, this may be an option or it may not be an option. We want to be really clear and honest about that. Carrie?
So I was just going to make a motion and then we could discuss more if you want. But I'll move to affirm that the Mount Graylock Regional School District will participate in the school choice program for FY22 with slots to be announced.
Mila, second.
Green moves. Miller seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Owen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you. That motion passes.
And so for the next item is, is, you know, to me, the, 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 the most important piece of business that we are conducting tonight and, and it, which is to discuss and show to you, the school committee and the community, what our plans are and what our intentions are around professional development activities and including some, some curriculum work where it's applicable pertaining to diversity, equity, inclusion, and, and belonging. And so for this, I will again, do a screen share, do have a presentation, and I would certainly encourage members of the committee to, to please stop me at any point along the way if I can be of service in explaining a point or clarifying anything. Try to be as clear as possible about what we're actually doing here. Occasionally, superintendents find themselves in the awkward position of there is much conversation swirling around our work. But we owe it to the elected school committee to be among the first, if not the first, to, to, to actually have access to that work. So we're going to dive right into this. This is our presentation on our plans related to diversity, to equity, to inclusion and belonging. The, the real heart of this work is working to better understand and know ourselves and to know those who we, we share our community and our, our, our county and our Commonwealth and our nation and our world with. We are always with our students, working and within ourselves, working to build greater empathy and understanding of not only ourselves, but our history or shared history in our understanding of one another. And we are, of course, always, and this is an area where I, I have to assume that we all agree that working to end bias and working to end hate and working to end the notion that anybody feels unsafe in a place like a school is, is work that we can all agree is absolutely vital. As always, I will start with, with words of gratitude to the, to the team that really helped us put this together. I'd like to thank Ellie Cotts, Joel Brookner, Joe Bergeron, Jonathan Knopper, several colleagues from the Center for Learning and Action at Williams, several members of the Parents' Action Group and others in the community who have helped initiate this work and helped us to consider this work. And yeah, I, I can assure you, as long as I'm superintendent here and I suspect as long as these school committee members, as long as you are members, this work will continue. This is sort of a, an overview of, of the framework that we see for this year. But, but this is work that history illustrates clearly to us will not and cannot end. I would also like to thank our students, their caretakers, parents, their families for helping us to consider this work and for helping us, for helping to make the case that the safety of some of our students is indeed compromised in our school community. And we're not alone in that. That stands firm for every school district I have ever served in, in Massachusetts and Virginia and Pennsylvania. And I think it's something that every school district in the nation, if they are not working toward greater safety for all of their students, particularly their students of color, particularly their students who, who are transgender, particularly their students that are gay or lesbian, particularly their students that suffer from, from people's misunderstandings and insistence on ableism. Perhaps students who are discriminated against because their religious beliefs do not jive with the majority. Every school district in the country should be doing this work. And finally, I would like to thank the Graylock Multicultural Student Union for their advocacy and for their assistance and for being brave young people who insist that this work be done and insists that the people that are paid to do the work on behalf of students, do this work on behalf of students. I like to start off, some of you know, I'm a, I'm a recovering English teacher with a literature degree. And this is a writer who, who has moved me time and time again. And this is, this is a quote from a piece that James Baldwin wrote for Esquire magazine in July 1960. It, it echoes the words of one of my mentors, a woman named Donna Harland, who is the former superintendent of the Central Berkshire School District, who, if she said to me once, she said it 100 times, "Superintendents always have to remember that the children are watching and the children are listening." And James Baldwin said in the article Fifth Avenue Uptown, "Children have never been very good at listening to their elders, but they have never failed to imitate them." And that's why we have to do this work. I have more faith in the generation of students that are studying across the parking lot from me now. The students, sorry, the students that are attending Lanesboro Elementary, the students that are attending Williamstown Elementary, I have so much faith that they are going to do better and be better than my generation is. And that's one of the things that gets us educators out of bed in the morning and gets us excited as we're coming in to do our work. Children have never been very good at listening to their elders, but they've never failed to imitate them. So we had better set examples that are worthy of imitation for our children. Why this work and why here? There is not a single community in the United States of America that could not benefit from a better understanding between and among the people that live in that community. There's not a single community or school community where the staff and the students do not need more tools to help them step in, step up, and shut down harassment, hate, and hurtful language. And then to have the difficult conversations that have to follow those events. There's not a single community or school community that could not benefit from a clearer understanding of history, actual history. And the fact that threads from hundreds of years ago still run and tie directly to current events and challenges for some in our nation right now. There's not a single community in the country or a school community in the country that could not benefit from a clear understanding of themselves and what we think and what we believe about the world and the people around us. There's not a single community in the United States that could not benefit from having more empathy for those that we share our streets with, in our stores with, in our houses of worship with, in our concert halls with, and certainly our schools with. Every child, every caretaker, every family has the right here and everywhere to be whole, to be happy, to be welcome, and to do all of those things while they are fully and totally being themselves, who they are and how they were created. Foundational to this work is, are the following understandings. There are thick, pronounced threads of racism, classism, sexism, and other ideologies and beliefs that consciously and unconsciously hold some people back from the full promise of America. These thick, pronounced threads are woven throughout our entire history as a nation. Policies, practices, and beliefs from days ago, from years ago, from decades ago, from centuries gone by, continue to haunt many people, many of our neighbors, people we care about. Policies and practices from days and years and decades of centuries and centuries ago hold back many people and continue to perpetuate fear and intolerance, and that's unacceptable. Racism did not end with any generation. Racism did not end with the passing of any law or any act or any historical event or period in history. Racism and bias of many types are ongoing positions and ongoing poisons that lessen each of us. Racism and other forms of bias impact the health, impact the wealth, and impact the daily lives of our neighbors and people that we share our lives with. Unconscious bias or implicit bias exist in every one of us. This isn't something to be ashamed of. It's not a mark of shame. We are human beings. And biologically, I believe we're wired to have these implicit biases that we pick up from sources starting in our infancy. So it's not a shame to have implicit bias. What might be a shame, however, is not reflecting upon acknowledging and working to overcome the implicit bias that, that I believe is present in each and every one of us. In case you feel like I can occasionally, as a leader and as a person, get preachy, let me assure you, the person that I preach to the most is the one human being on the planet over whom I have the most control, and that's me. This little word cloud that you see here, you know, this is describing one American. And that one American that this word cloud is describing is this American that's talking to you right now and presenting this. I'm a straight, male, Episcopalian, home-owning, automobile-owning, married, middle-class guy who grew up speaking English, who was born with the gender that I fully identify with. I am white, obviously. I am well-paid. I am well-educated. And my mother and father worked their entire lives so that my brothers and I could kind of have this leave it to Beaver type of life experience, and indeed we did. So for me, this work is personal, but as a leader, it's also institutional. This work is always sobering, and I see this work on a daily basis in my own life as vital. I'm not ashamed or embarrassed to be any of these things. I am who I am. And I would encourage that none of us need be ashamed of who we are. However, while I'm not embarrassed by who I am and I'm not ashamed of who I am, I do have to be hyper-aware of who I am. And I have to be hyper-aware, as Jake McCandless, the person, of the immense amount of privilege that, that I have automatically because of who and what I am, that many people that I know, that I care about, that I love deeply, that I work for and, and, and who I work to serve, have a very different life experience because of who they are. So I don't need to be embarrassed about these things, but I have to be aware of these things, hyper-aware of these things and what they mean and what they don't mean on a daily basis and on an hourly basis as a professional, as a dad, as a husband, as a neighbor, and as a human being. This work This work requires deep reflection, deep self-examination, brutal self-honesty, acknowledgement of many things that are uncomfortable and awkward, but totally necessary to acknowledge. This work requires an open mind and an open heart, and this work requires listening more than speaking. So our plan, that I'm going to outline in the next seven or eight slides, for some, our plan will not seem nearly aggressive enough. For some, our plan will not seem comprehensive enough or fast enough. And I would agree. We are, we are trying to untie knots that have been tied and tightened over decades and over centuries. For others, all of this work may appear as unnecessary and an unwise use of resources. I will just say that our district is committed to this work, as long as I am superintendent here, we are committed to this work. Our district will stick with this work. Because this is important to me, but it's important to the team that comprises the group of people that do the work here in the Mount Graylock Regional School District. Our district will continue to advocate for becoming a more anti-racist school community. Our district will not allow any child to be made to feel less than for any reason. Every child is a gift. Every child is a treasure. And the culture and heritage and the person that that child represents is a treasure too. And it's a treasure that we not only have to value and nurture and teach, but it's a treasure that we have to value and nurture and learn from ourselves. Our district will not tolerate any student feeling unsafe because of who they are for any reason. Our district will hold ourselves, starting with me, our staff and our students accountable for our choices, our words, our actions, and our inactions. Our district will work with partners so that we continue to learn and grow as practitioners who are honored enough to have the title of educator and as leaders. For the upcoming school year, our plan is built through multiple interconnected parts, collecting baseline information on perceptions and lived experiences of our clients, the families that we serve, and families that we don't have the opportunity of serve because they really don't trust that we can educate their kids and keep their kids safe. Part two of the plan is learning opportunities for our staff, for our students, for our caretakers and families, and for our larger community. Part three is that we will continue, our school councils are vital to this work. Our school councils, all in the school improvement plan for the year that we're currently in, all featured DEI and B prominently in their school improvement plans. This is important to the parents, the community members, and in some cases, the students and the administrators who constitute our school councils. And so individual school-based plans, learning opportunities and approaches directed by school staff, administration, and school councils will really remain the heart of what we're doing. Our plan this year has to include some policy work. What are we going to do every time we have a hateful incident or an incident where a student is made to feel unsafe simply because of who they are? Our plan will always continue, will always include a continuous curriculum review. And for anybody in the community that thinks we're going to gather up all of our current curriculum, put it in a dumpster, and bring in new items, that's, that's not the case. What continuous curriculum review means is that we will continue to look at our curricula on a daily basis and in sometimes more formal basis, and we'll make sure that all of the students that we serve are represented in that curriculum. We will work to make sure that our libraries, that our students' cultures and linguistic backgrounds are represented, that there's authors in that library, in those classroom collections, who look like them and who may have some shared life experiences. We will continue to weed out materials that inappropriately and without literary, historical, or social reason are harmful representations of different people. You know, again, you know, it may look different at the elementary school than it does in the high school, but you know, the, what we teach is really important. It delivers a message to our students about how important they are, how important their family is, how important their culture and their heritage is. And we will continue to partner with Lanesboro and Williamstown and other communities in Berkshire County and beyond, who are committed to being fully welcoming and inclusive communities and who are really committed to being culturally competent practitioners. Baseline information, perceptions, and lived experiences. This work has already begun. We have a meeting tomorrow with Courtney, who we have been fortunate enough to work with and at least electronically get back into our community again, because she has lived here and worked here before. And Courtney will continue to include in-person interviews, surveys, and outreach from the district to our families, to individuals, to students, and answer to a couple of questions I've had from parents. I will say no child is going to be forced to meet with Courtney. I think any child that meets her would likely really want to spend some time with her and tell their story to her, and no child will be forced to meet with Courtney. And if a child wants to meet with Courtney and the parents or the guardians or the caretakers wish to be there, that is certainly okay. We are very grateful to Courtney for taking on this work and for, once again, coming to the Berkshires and serving our community as she has in the past. Courtney's work will help us understand the experiences of the families we serve, and it will help us understand the experiences of those who have purposefully avoided being served by us. Ms. Tunis, Courtney will report out to the school committee and to the community later this summer. And it has just been a pleasure to work with her and an honor to work with her, and we look forward to moving, moving forward together. Our plan is really rich with learning opportunities. The work of becoming more empathetic, more sensitive, more responsive, and more welcoming human beings who approach the world and all of its people with humility, with understanding and with care is vital for the well-being of our students, every single one of them. And it's vital not only for our students who are going to spend the rest of their lives in Williamstown or in Lanesboro, it's vital because all of our students at some point are likely to have experiences outside of Berkshire County, outside of the communities that, that, that love them and nurture them and welcome them the way our communities do. This is important work for every child. This same work is vital for all of us who serve children professionally, including the superintendent, including our administration, and including the members of our elected school committee. And there will be learning opportunities for you as well. Our learning opportunities, which some of which are district-sponsored through our budget, some of which will be grant-funded, and some are, we're getting an assist from local funding, things like the Williams College Olmsted Fund, will include the work that follows in the next couple of slides. We will have the deep honor, and we've already met with her several times, and I'm very grateful to Joelle Brookner for, for taking on the impossible task of building a schedule that works for, for our teachers and our staff and our administrators and with Dr. Joshi's incredibly busy schedule. Dr. Kyati Joshi will be leading administrative, teacher, and staff professional development this summer. Dr. Joshi is no stranger to the Berkshires. She was here a couple of summers ago. She worked with folks from Mount Graylock Regional School District, some folks from Pittsfield, some folks from the local colleges. And we are very excited and honored to have her continuing to work with us, ideally over multiple years, as, as we work to become more, just, just more strategic and better tools to do this work. Dr. Joshi's work this year will really focus on teacher professional development that will start at the end of the summer, that will continue through the fall and the spring. We're looking at a cohort of 45 teachers and educators, paraprofessionals, et cetera, from all three of the schools in the district. This will include large group instruction. It will include small group consultation, office hours, and even Dr. Joshi coming in and observing a class if somebody would, would choose to take advantage of that. We will follow up with her with this original cohort of 45 and hopefully be running a second cohort of 45 educators in the summer of 2022. Dr. Joshi will be working with us to develop a community keynote address in the spring. She is working on parent and caretaker workshops in a, in a in-person gathering in the spring. And she will be working to some degree with us in person and sometimes online, where, you know, we're, we're going to work hard to see what's going to work best and be most effective for the educators that she's working with. She actually is a professor at, I believe, Fairleigh Dickinson University in New Jersey, so she's not really that far away. So we look forward to welcoming her several times in person over the upcoming year. Our thanks to Dr. Joshi and our gratitude to Dr. Joshi for working with the district. Her schedule is full. The need for this work is great. The need of somebody with her national reputation of being an expert in how to do this work is great, and we feel very fortunate that she is coming here to work with us. And here's a copy in the bottom corner of a book that is edited by Dr. Joshi, Teaching for Diversity and Social Justice. Invite you to check that book out. Another learning opportunity that we have, which we're very excited about, Dr. Simran Jeet Singh will present to all three of our schools this fall. He will be presenting about his life story. He will be presenting about his experience. He is a professor of comparative religion at several universities and several seminaries. And he will be presenting, you know, particularly at our elementary schools, a book that he wrote, Fauci's Thing Keeps Going, about a marathon runner who is 100 years old, who he knows personally, you can maybe tell that. He will be presenting in person to both of our elementary schools, and we are simply thrilled about this. He is a dynamic, electric presenter, and this is a book that, you know, was, that was written because part of his story is, as a kid growing up in Texas and going into his school library and saying, "Do you have any books that are, that feature people that look like me?" And the librarian saying, "No, sweetie, we don't, because nobody wants to read those books." And here he is, 25 or 30 years later, creating that book and having that book illustrated so no other child has to walk into a library and hear that who they are and what they are doesn't matter, won't sell, and other people won't want to live vicariously for a few minutes through reading about somebody like them. Dr. Singh will do a full school presentation to the Mount Graylock Regional School, and he has also offered to meet with small groups of interested students about just, you know, young people's role in becoming advocates and activists in their own community. And then we're working to, and again, I have to thank Joelle for, for taking her magic of scheduling an elementary school with nearly 500 students and translating that into working out a schedule that works for a bunch of teachers, a bunch of kids, and these nationally-known presenters. So thank you, Joelle. And we are planning a spring of '22 follow-up with staff and students for Dr. Singh, and we're very excited about this relationship we've built with him. So our plan moving forward, we want to also, over the course of this year, and really starting right now, we want to work to promote practices that ensure the hiring and retention of a more representative professional corps of educators and leaders. The research is clear, the academic literature is clear. It is good for kids to see, to see people doing the work in a school building that look like those kids. And not only is it good for students, let's just say, for instance, students of color, to see professionals of color, it's also good for every other student as well, in many ways, from academic to, to social and emotional, to the DEIB work that we're talking about. We will continue ongoing curriculum and materials examination to ensure that representations of all people are appropriate, honest, and present in what we teach. Is this a throwing out of our current curriculum? By no means, by no means. But it is an effort that we should be putting in anyway to make sure that our curriculum is as robust as it should be, as accurate as it can be, that it is pushing students. And this is simply adding on a layer that's saying, does it appropriately, does it appropriately, does our curriculum, do our materials appropriately, appropriately represent who our students are? And the flip side of that coin is, do we have material that inappropriately represents? Recently, you know, over January, I had occasion to, to visit my mother in Western Pennsylvania, and my stepfather and my daughter and I were looking through a box of old books, and we came upon a reader from the 1930s. My stepfather's first wife was an elementary school teacher for about 40 years. And my daughter was looking through this reader, and my, my daughter's 18, she's a senior, she's 10 times smarter and 100 times more savvy than her father is. She's looking at that book and saying, you know, I mean, I can't believe that once upon a time in America, women were represented this way. You know, in this, in this particular reader we were looking at, the, the, the young, the young girl in the reader was, was never out of a dress. The young boy was never out of rough-and-tumble activities outside. The father was always represented in a suit, either coming home from work or going off to work. And the mother was almost never represented in this 80-page book outside of the kitchen. And my daughter was, was, was taking note of, wow, yeah, this matters. Can you imagine being a kid at that time and, and, you know, and thinking that this is just how the world is? So we should always be looking at our curricula to make sure that we're representing things not only as they are honestly, as they were honestly, but also promoting the way we want things to be. We will continue to work with our individual school councils and the Graylock Multicultural Student Union to empower our school staff, to empower our students, to empower our families, to create programming in all three sites. And we will continue to work with partners in the community, both thought partners and partners with planning activities outside of school, in our own community and beyond, to create learning opportunities for individuals and groups. This work, look, this work is, but before we even made this presentation, this work was controversial. I insulate and isolate myself from social media as much as I can, but, but I'm also, I also don't live under a rock. So before we even started this work, it seemed like this work was controversial. But you know what? Sometimes being a professional educator and being a leader in a community is not about doing what's easy. It's not necessarily even about doing what's popular. It's about doing what's right. There's a book that a friend of mine from a, from a different school district where I served in the Berkshire sent to me recently. It's called What the Road Said by a young woman named Cleo Wade, and I would encourage you to take a look at this book. It's wonderful. This is one of the pages from the book. What if something unexpected happens? The road says to the child that's asking the road these questions, "Keep going." What if there are mountains that feel too tall to climb? Keep going. What if there are rivers that feel too wide to cross? What if there are rivers that feel too wide to cross? What if my heart gets broken? What if I feel stuck? What if giving up is easier? Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, said the road. This work is vital. Our children will sometimes listen to what we say. But history tells us our children will always imitate the things that we do and imitate the attitudes that we carry with us. And so we owe it to our children, we owe it to our community, to keep going, keep going, keep going. And with that, that is the end of the the presentation. I will stop the screen share. If anybody wants to go back, I'm happy to. But I appreciate your your attention and and being willing to listen to a few more minutes this evening of my voice as we talk about the framework for the work that we're going to take on in the upcoming school year. So thank you. Jose, is that a hand up?
It is. It is. I I really appreciate the presentation that you put together. And I think we can imagine how how important, I think, some of the words that you you chose to share with us today are to me and and to many people I know, and I'm sure many of us on on the school committee. What I'd love to speak to, or at least to give you a moment to address are the the genuine concerns that some members of our community have about this approach to to education. There have been members of our community that are concerned about the consultant that we are working with about the ability of this consultant to be truly open-minded and objective in their evaluation of our community. And there are some deep-rooted concerns about how anti-racism education is is threatening or or maybe racist at its foundation, or at least anti-white is 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 an argument that is posed. And I'd love it if you could speak to the concerns of many members of our community who feel threatened or concerned for the well-being of their children as our district embarks on this, what I think is incredibly important work.
Sure, I I I am happy to. And and, you know, Jose, I will take the opportunity to say, I I am not an academic in any way on this matter or this area of work. I am a roll-up-my-sleeves worker in this work and have been from, you know, the day that I stepped into my my very, very racially and economically diverse first classroom in Louisa County, Virginia, teaching a group of ninth graders. Having grown up in essentially an entirely white rural community in in Western Pennsylvania. So I may get some of the I certainly can't speak of this with with even a tiny percentage of the academic accuracy of many people in this community. But I but I will say this, as as a parent and as a practitioner and as a leader. You know, we we are not and maybe this is right, maybe it's wrong, I don't know, we are not throwing out our curriculum and replacing it with critical race theory-driven curricula. Now, I do have two books sitting right here on my desk. Stamped from the beginning. And the the younger person's version, which Jason Reynolds helped Dr. Kendy with. You know, I I am a studier of this and I am for me as an individual, I am a believer that this is this is not anti-white as a white guy, but it is causing me, a white guy, to take a hard look at the fact that if in many, in many ways, if life is a hundred-yard dash because of the way I was born, I am starting the hundred-yard dash from about ten feet from the finish line. And other people are starting the hundred-yard dash from ten miles away from the finish line. And for for me to pretend that that is not the case is is inappropriate. For my worldview, it's immoral for me. I'm not saying that for anybody else, but for me. And I I just can't operate that way. And I've been an educator for twenty-eight years. I've been a superintendent for sixteen years. I I've I've seen what this looks like in real life enough to know that for me and my practice, I'm right. So, you know, I would say, please, please trust us that that we want what is good for kids, for all kids. I I would ask people just, you know, the the same way I I said in the presentation, this work begins with me. This work also begins with you. And that's that's everybody as an individual. Looking at your own life, looking at your own experiences, looking at the biases you carry with you that you don't even think about. And we want people to think about these things. I want our staff to think about these things. We want our students to think about these things. Are we attempting to brainwash and indoctrinate whatever? No. But we are asking people to consider. And 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 just like medical doctors take an oath to do no harm. You know, we're we're going to be proactive, but at a minimum, we're going to work really hard to make sure that the school department, the 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 school district, which is charged with educating kids intellectually, socially, emotionally, as human beings, are going to make sure we do no harm. And where we have curricula that are doing harm, where there are learning materials that are doing harm because they're inappropriate representations, where we have other students or our staff or our administrators that are doing harm, we're going to stop that. I look at the menu of of what we're doing this year. And I want to be real clear, I don't think the role of our consultant is necessarily to interpret this information for us. I think the role of our consultant is to gather this information for us. So people who live here and work here and and have a life here, we're the ones that need to interpret this. I'm not convinced that a a fifty-year-old, white, male superintendent who's new in town is the best person to go out to our families of color and say to them, yeah, trust me, what's your lived experience here? I think we needed professional help for that. I think we needed a third party for that. I know that people will have thoughts and opinions across the spectrum on the 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 activist life and the professional life of everybody that we hire to come in and do this work. And they may have the same for me. But I would suggest that that we need to get a real temperature check on what our families, particularly our families of color, have experienced in this community. I've been here six months. I think I have been a part of five or six situations in which race played a significant role to the point where I think children were hurt, parents were outraged, caretakers were outraged, and damage was done. I don't think I brought that stuff with me. I think it's here. I think it's been here. I think it's going to stay here unless we do something about it. And so part of that is an acknowledgement that it is a problem. And even though these are two amazing and wonderful communities, it's a problem here, just like it is in twenty thousand other small communities across the country. So I I don't I don't know if that long monologue got at the heart of your question, Jose. But but look, we we want every child to be able to come into our schools and know that they are free to be themselves without having in the back of their mind that that decision was made because I'm black or because I'm brown or because I'm Islamic or because I'm Jewish. We don't want a child walking down the hall, holding their breath, that somebody's going to make a comment to them.
Julia, just just have a follow-up, just just very quickly, more of a request that I I would love it as a district that we you know, we devote resources in some way, shape, or form to evaluating the effectiveness of the program that we'd like to roll out. You know, how much more welcoming of a of a place is the district for our families from marginalized and my Tora, you know, minority identities, families of color and the like. And so that's something that I'd love for us to focus on, and I'm sure this is going to be a long-term, maybe even lifelong endeavor for us to to get this right.
Jose, if I could just jump in really quickly and just as a little plug to the committee, we received an invitation from MASC to participate in a workshop about diversity, inclusion, and equity, and making goals actionable around the plans that we create. So I would encourage everyone to try to attend that workshop. I see Stephen's hand up and then Julia.
Thank you. You know, again, I just want to second what's being a third or fourth, whatever are the numbers now, what's being said about the work that is being done and still yet to be done. And to just, yes, I really liked your image of, you know, where people are starting for the race. And I think it's absolutely essential that we make sure that we take into account, you know, what opportunities people have had, what resources are needed to make sure that everybody has what they need to succeed. Along these lines, I think it's, you know, really good that we try to be transparent with the community, that we have these conversations to say what is going on. I think it's also important to recognize that, you know, while these are, you know, problems and issues the district needs to deal with, not every problem fits into this prism, that, you know, there are other dimensions as well. We've had issues between your students from one town and another. We've had bullying. When we had the issues with the sixth graders visiting Mount Greylock, there were issues on a variety of axes, including just, unfortunately, kids being kids. Not saying every issue is that, but it's important that we keep in mind all the things that are going on and not try to put everything into just one prism, because that's not necessarily going to be the best way to approach problems like this. Thank you.
Julia?
So I'm deeply grateful for the work that's gone in so far, and I just need to always start with that. And I'm so heartened to hear where this is all going. I do, I I the concept of kids being kids is one I just want to call out and say, I appreciate what you're saying is kids being kids, kids can be kind, thoughtful, listening, you know, welcoming kids. And that's what I see this work leading towards. My question is, this work undoubtedly I requires a degree of emotional resiliency. And I I believe that some of the concern about the work is this, and you touched on it so beautifully in your own experience, that, you know, you are who you are, there's no shame in who you are. But but you you need to be aware of who you are, right, and where you you fit into this world. But I think people fear that shame. And I think that that's, you know, one of the emotions that comes up as you're doing yourself self-discovery or your reflection. So I guess my question embedded in all this is, how is this work linked to the SEL work that you're doing with students? And where does the SEL for teachers and for staff and for faculty and, you know, that the adults who are working with our students, where does that fit in as well?
Yeah, I, you know, one of the reasons, one of the first things I said when I when I got here and and understood and assumed that this would be work we would need to do. And if I had applied for and been hired for a superintendency in California or Iowa, I would have made the same assumption. We need to do this work. One of the first thoughts that I had, and one of the first things I said, is that we we need professional help. We, you know, we're we're educators. We know a lot of things. We do a lot of things. Even thinking about the school committee agenda tonight, we've covered cell phone towers, cannabis cultivation, and DEIB. And I I got, you know, there are times to just remind you, remind me that I'm a jack-of-all-trades and I'm a I'm a true master of none. So the folks that we have brought in as professional help, particularly Dr. Joshi, because of past experience, so people on our administrative team with her. This is an important piece of what she does. It is it is helping folks understand the gravity of all of this and to some degree, the life and death nature of all of this. But also understand where we're we're all starting from different places on this, on this walk, on this walk toward better understanding and more empathy. And that there are some there are some things that we just simply can't tolerate. But we have to tolerate the human beings that are doing some of those things. And remember that we're all products of something. And so, you know, when when we talk about this in our administrative meeting, so we talk about this with the consultants that we're working with. All of this is embedded in the nature of bolstering all of us as human beings. And some of us are going to have to be made or 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 allow ourselves to be made really uncomfortable in order to bolster up people that 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 history, circumstances, laws, policies, practices, attitudes have have worked to not allow them to rise up. So it it's certainly not forgotten for me, and it's certainly not forgotten as we work through to identify who is going to be doing this work, that every single person involved in this work is a living, breathing, feeling human being. And and we're, we are, you know, in in terms of formally tying our DEIB work and our SEI work, I'm very grateful to a couple of people in the community who have worked with our principals around the hiring of our new the two new school social worker positions that we've brought in to help them understand how social work and this work do work hand-in-hand, and SEI work work hand-in-hand. But I I don't know, Julia, I'd have a tough time at this point giving you a strong answer of a formal crosswalk between those two areas of work, other than to say, everything we do, we keep in mind that it is human work.
Carrie? So one of the public comments that was read this evening included a number of demands for information, right? Justifications for expenditures of resources and how were decisions made? It's not the first communication that we've received from what appears to be a small group, but a vocal group of folks in the community who clearly have issues with what they think we're doing. I'd be curious to know if that changes after hearing some to know if that changes after hearing some of what we're actually doing. But I would like to, I would like to know how we can support you and the administration in doing the work and protecting your time and energy from needing to respond continually to criticism of what people think you might be doing. It's very hard to read it. It must be very hard to respond to it. You've done so very graciously a number of times already. And I would like to know how the committee can support your focusing your attention on the work rather than on responding or defending the work. And if that's a resolution, right? And we've talked about resolutions, affirming the work that is being done by you and the administration and the, the principals and the schools. I'm happy to, I'm happy to make that motion. But you tell us, what do you need?
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. I, I really appreciate that. And I think everybody on the administrative team that's put so much work into this, you know, and first of all, I would say part, part of my job is to respond and part of my job is to defend. And and I, I will, you know, in, in our time of working together, and I hope it's years, you know, I, I will likely get accused of many things. One of the things I, I refuse to be accused of or, or in some things I'll, some of the things that I get accused of being, I'll probably say, yeah, you're right. I am that. And I'm probably not going to change. But I, I will not be accused and, and will not give, give proof that I'm not respectful, that I'm not courteous and that I don't listen. And, and I can say as somebody that once upon a time could have perhaps been one of, one of the folks that would look at this and say, gosh, couldn't, couldn't you do something different with these resources? Couldn't you do something different with your time? And believe me, you know, my respect for, for, for all caretakers and all parents who do what they think is right and put time and energy and love and care and, and passion into raising their children. You, you will have my respect, even if you don't have my agreement. But part of, part of the job is just responding to, to, to individuals that don't agree. There, there may be some things I can learn, but, but I, you know, at some point, at, at some point, it almost, and I'm not saying that this is the case here. I'm just saying that at some point, the questions, the queries, the continual undercutting can almost seem like a, a, a strategy to take time and energy away from the actual work at hand. And, and I do have a, I, I think my, my years as a superintendent, my years as a principal and my years as a teacher with, 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 with dozens and dozens of ninth graders, I have a pretty good radar for when that's happening and when I need to say, thank you, I have received that and proceed with the work. So I, I don't know an answer to your question tonight, but I will think about it. I, I, I think part of the answer though is I appreciate and we appreciate as an administrative team just simply being given the space and the time to do this work. And we appreciate the, the support of the school committee as a body and as individuals for this work. And to those of you that have said, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? Have you looked into this? Have you looked into that? Or have you, have you considered this person or that person? It's, it's all been hugely supportive and hugely welcome. And I promise I speak for the entire administrative team as we have taken these, these, yeah, for me, first steps, but there's a lot of people here that have been doing this work for a long time and doing it well. But we do appreciate the support and we will, we will consider ways in which we, we, we need your support or need more support or different support. So thank you for that.
Steve, I see your hand up and then Julia.
Yes, thank you. So I, I think one way we can support the administration as well as engage the people who have concerns is to continue to be transparent, to continue to have conversations like this so that it is clear to people what we're doing. The problem is when you have many different groups with similar goals, but different implementations, it's sometimes very hard for people to know precisely where you're going, where you're going to end up. And this has been done very well in some districts and alarmingly in others. And so, you know, it does take more time. I've been on the school committee with other issues that have gone slowly because of people asking questions. But in the end, it's a chance to engage people and to show people, you know, what we care about, why we care about it, why we think it's important, where we think we're going to go and to relay people's concerns that, you know, while you may have heard of other districts, you know, some of the districts in New York where things did, things maybe devolved, you know, we do not think that this is going to head in that direction. We think it's going to head towards this positive outcome. That we're, you know, transparent when things happen and that we show that we're working to create, you know, one community where we're all mountains and not divide us up into lots of smaller ones. Thank you.
Julia?
Thank you for those thoughts, Steve. I love that concept of just remaining transparent. And I also, Carrie, and your question, despite Jake's answer that maybe you'll, you'll get back to us, I can't help but think, would it be helpful for us to have a resolution tonight that says something to the effect of we support the work that our superintendent is doing and you know, stand at the ready to support this work going forward? You know, I don't know what that means, but I just wondered if that, that could be helpful.
I, I think if I may, Christina, you know, in some ways, you know, the, the, the real show of support, we, we appreciate the show of support of support and, and with a resolution or without a resolution, our administrative team and, and the, and the faculty and the staff that believe in this work and believe that it's as important as any other work that we do, we know that we're supported by this school committee. It's, it's, it's even more important that if, if I were the parent of a child that doesn't fit, if, if, that, that, that doesn't fit the mold of what is too often considered just a regular, normal kid in, 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 in American schools. It, it's really the support is for our kids, our students of color. We also, we didn't list it on this, on this agenda tonight, but we're, we're also continuing to do work with, with Kelly Shuff Heck around LGBTQ, you know, needs that we have in the school. Dr. Joshi is somebody, as well as Dr. Singh, who, who will be talking to us about the fact that, you know, we, we, we we have a host of, of, of different faith traditions that we serve as well, as well as folks who have no faith and have no interest in, 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 in anything that, that borders on the supernatural like that. So the most important support that we can show is for, for, for families and students who feel like they may be historically by, by their country, by their, their community, by their school have not felt as fully supported or as safe. So if, 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 if a support of this framework and, and this plan that we talked about tonight is, is supportive of, of, of us, that's great. But the real power is in the individual and the corporate support for, for our students and our families on, on whose behalf we're doing this work, the reasons why we're doing this work. Excuse me.
Anything else? Or should we move on to the next agenda item? Julia looks deep in thought, so I'm giving her some extra consideration here.
Much appreciated. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation and thank you, everybody else, for your contributions to this discussion. I would like to make a motion to move into executive session with intent to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2183 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining MGEA and as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
I'll second. I don't think I have, Julia can second it.
Julia, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Wait, sorry. Are we using the same link?
So I was, I'm going to explain that, but we are, Joe is going to create a breakout room and we're all going to slide into that breakout room. The one question I had for Joe is do I stop recording, pause recording? What do I do with that?
Yes, I think you'll need to pause recording, but I will need to be a host in order to create the breakout rooms.
Oh, you're not a host, Joe? Sorry about that. Will it work if we are co-host or do you have to be a host host?
Yep, I can, I can do it now.
Okay, so if we could, we have a motion and a second. Once we move, just so you know, Ursula, once we move into executive session, we'll all have to declare that we're alone, but let's call the vote. Sorry.
O and I?
Conry, I?
Constantine, I?
Elfin, by an I?
Green, I?
Malloy, I?
Mila, I?
Okay, it is 9:40 PM and we are moving into executive session. Joe? Pause the recording. Okay, I have unpause. We are now recording again and we are back in open session. It is 10:09 PM. We are moving along. Okay.
Christina, I'd like to move that the committee approved the MOA with the Mass, what is it? The MGE, Mount Greylock Educations Association as presented.
Mila, second.
I have a motion from Green and a second from Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
O and I?
Conry, I?
Constantine, I?
Elfin, by an I?
Green, I?
Malloy, I?
Mila, I?
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Next up on the agenda, upcoming meetings, we have a May 20th finance subcommittee meeting, time to be determined and a June 10th regular session, school committee meeting at 6:00 PM.
Christina, do you mind if I ask Ursula while we're here? We typically meet at four o'clock, but if that's not good with your schedule for finance, we can select a different time.
Okay, I could probably make that work.
Okay, and maybe we can talk about it more at the meeting scheduling further. So four o'clock is the time of the finance subcommittee meeting.
Thank you. Okay, I do not have any other items for discussion, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
We should let Ursula make it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Miller, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
O and I?
Conry, I?
Constantine, I?
Elfin, by an I, I, I.
Green, I?
Malloy, I?
Mila, I?
Okay, it is 10:11 PM. We have formally indoctrinated Ursula into the length of our meetings.
Welcome. I don't remember the, I don't remember the last time I was up this late, I gotta tell you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, everyone.